Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you so much for being here this afternoon. The time is now 5:30 and we are going to call this meeting to order. We are going to start with the invocation. Commissioner Lopez, will you lead us in?
Prayer.
Lord, give us a screen for today's task. Give us clarity and direction to keep our objectives in a meaningful way. Give us wisdom as we work to improve our city and the lives of our neighbors. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. All right. And Mark, will you read the conflict of interest, please?
Conflict of interest. Under state law, a conflict of interest exists if a council member or certain members of that person's family has a qualifying financial interest in an agenda item. Members with a conflict of interest cannot participate in a discussion nor vote on an agenda item. Are there any known conflicts of interest to disclose at this time?
Yes, sir. Item 26C, not for any reasons that you pointed out, but a conflict nonetheless.
Any? Commissioner Lopez?
No.
No avocado.
None here, sir.
Ben.
I have one on item number 26 and regarding the school district.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. Moving on to citizen communication. Amanda, do we have anyone signed up for citizen communication?
Yes, ma'am, we do. The first one is Linda Gonzalez Ramos, 1022 North B Street, and it's regarding the tax rate.
Ms. Ramos? She wants to be...
Yeah, she's...
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
How's everybody doing with this heat? The reason I want to speak today, we have two minutes, right?
Just three minutes and just say your name and district. Take a sec.
Linda Gonzalez Ramos, District 2, 1022 North B Street. On my knowledge, I don't know too much what's going on, I just know that there's been an increase or want to increase taxes for citizens. We're being taxed left and right. We're also being taxed by an entity of Waterworks serving Harlingen because it's not part of Harlingen. They get they taxes too. You want to increase taxes for the oppressed in District 2 is not fair. My question to everyone is, are you working for the city of Harlingen or Cameron County or for the citizens of Harlingen? Because everybody up here has been elected to represent every district. Are you doing it for your district or are you doing it for Cameron County? That's my question. Are you for the people or against the people? I don't feel that we should be taxed further more. My escrow has gone up in my mortgage in the last year. It shouldn't be that way. It should have stayed at a certain rate. However, taxes are increasing. Another tax increase? Why? Where's the money going? Because in my district, there's nothing being done. I want to be Harlingen proud again. I want to Harlingen beautiful. Make District 2 beautiful because I don't see anywhere where any of this money is going to. And that's basically what I want to say. I want to thank you for your time and that's just my concern.
Thank you, Ms. Ramos. And I encourage you to stick around if you have time. I don't, I imagine some of this may clear, clear out, but we will be discussing this further on the agenda and so that way you can, at least we can, you can hear what...
And I made it out here even if I'm sick. I've been real sick, my blood levels are low. So, you know, I came here because that's a big problem for me, especially because I live in one of the more oppressed areas and, and I don't see anything being done, especially with raising of taxes.
Understand. If, if you're not feeling good, we don't want to keep you around too much, but you can catch it on YouTube also. I encourage you or later at another point, too. Have a good day. Thank you, Ms. Ramos.
The next one is Maria Rodriguez, 1018 North B Street.
She would be present. Maria Rodriguez? This is on what topic, Amanda?
Same thing, tax rate.
Do I go to the next one?
We can, and then when she gets here or...
Amanda, who's the next person so we can have him on deck?
Yes.
Okay. The next one is Jack Brogdon.
If, if we can get Jack Brogdon ready, come on in.
Hi, good afternoon. I want to thank you all for receiving me. First of all, I got to thank God for being here. I appreciate it. I wanted to know what was the reasons for...
Ms. Rodriguez, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Can you just state your name and...
Maria T. Rodriguez.
And your district?
District 2.
Okay.
My reason is because why are we raising taxes? Nothing's been done. I live in District 2, they haven't fixed anything. I'm retired, I'm under budget, I have a disabled daughter, I can't afford anymore. My mortgage is going up, I just can't. I don't see any, the reason why everything's going to go up. The water, everything, I don't understand. We're already paying enough. I mean, the valley's supposed to be the lowest place to live and it's getting ridiculously too expensive for us to live. We live on income, fixed income, we can't afford it. So I want to know what, what are the reasons? I don't know, District 2, they haven't done anything. People racing through my street. Thanks to Boswell, he did put the speed limits, even though he didn't win, but they're still racing through, nothing's been done in the school, I live right in front of Savala. They don't, they don't want to put more speed bumps, they don't want to fix the roads, they don't want to do anything. So I don't understand. That's my, my questions.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez.
Thank you.
Please, I welcome you to stay. We are going to be talking about the tax rate.
Okay.
And providing information on that and hopefully it answers some of your questions. At this point, unfortunately, as much as we'd like to, we can't do the back and forth, but I wish we could, but we will be talking about it because I know it's important to, to everyone and so we will discuss it in great detail. Thank you. We have Jack Brogdon?
He likes to be, he would like to be called mayor, so let me go ahead and call him.
And if you can get the officers, the next one on the list?
The next one is Raymond Reyes.
He's right there.
All right.
Okay, well, let me...
Let's go ahead and call Jack.
Hello.
Hello, Mr. Brogdon. This is Amanda Lisondo. You signed up to speak under citizens communication. You have three minutes, sir, and you, you may start now.
I would like to discuss about the notice of the public hearing on the proposed tax increase. Let's discuss about the last two fiscal years for property taxes. In fiscal year 2020, the city increases taxes $2,489,100. In fiscal year 2021, the city increased the property taxes to $895,757. In 2022, the reason why the tax rate decreased at negative 2.2% because it is at the maximum tax rate, the maximum tax rate without going to the voters for approval. Some of the commissioners believe they didn't, they didn't, they didn't raise the tax rate but decreased it. Within the past two, two, two years, many commissioners here ran their campaigns on not increasing property taxes. Currently, you have proposed another property tax increase. The fiscal year 2022 proposed property tax revenue increased to $1,053,973. This will be the third that the property taxes have increased. The total increase in property tax revenue that the city of Harlingen has received from taxpayers to fund the increased budget is $4,438,830 in the last three years. The city proposed to add additional staff coordinators and hand out 3% raises at the expense of the citizens of Harlingen. Many citizens in Harlingen are struggling to make ends meet and you're wanting to increase property taxes for the third year in a row. Commissioners, you, you are responsible for setting the property tax rate. I'm opposed to a property tax increase of, of $1,053,973. I'm requesting that you adopt the tax rate of no new tax rate or close to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Reyes?
The next one is Mr. Reyes.
And who's next, Amanda?
Kimberly Gray.
Kimberly Gray.
Okay. Raymond Reyes, District 1, 706 Nantucket Drive, in Harlingen, obviously. My experience with taxes, you know, taxes are what they are. I mean, they're, they're unavoidable. We're not always going to agree with them. I know personally, I don't like to pay taxes, but I have to pay taxes. It's just something that, that is constantly going to happen. If they need to be raised for whatever reason, I'm, you know, know a lot of different things about a lot of different stuff and, but the way things are because of what happened with the pandemic, there's a lot of entities at many levels, state, federal, local, you know, citizens that are all hurting and stuff. Being an analyst by trade, I look at numbers. Property tax obviously affects me because I own some property in the downtown district. I have some other personal property that, again, they're raising taxes. You know, San Antonio is doing the same thing. Ultimately, it's unavoidable, but if it can be done with everything properly taken into consideration and the numbers crunched correctly and the expenditures looked at where the money's actually going to go to projects that are actually going to benefit the citizens of Harlingen, I think there would be maybe not so much resistance. I know, you know, not every administration is the best administration on many levels. I think we got a good team now to set forth and move forward to do some positive things for Harlingen, but again, nothing's perfect. Like always, so my staff and my businesses, it's always a work in progress, you know? We just want to move forward and not backwards. As things are explained and as you've mentioned, it can be reviewed on YouTube. Sometimes I've watched myself because I wasn't too, wanted to make sure I was clear of what I was talking about. So it's explained very simple, but very straightforward, not, not to make it too complicated because that's where people get lost, you know? They don't really grasp it until it's going to directly affect them and then sometimes we have a tendency to not intentionally speak over their knowledge, but if they have an understanding of it, they might not be as resistant to it. And if, you know, it doesn't pan out, well, like I stated before, you know, I'm not going to be gone because I'm retired now. And so I'm always looking out because I'd like to see Harlingen prosper like it, you know, was when we first moved down here. We had the Jubilee, we had, you know, the Rio Fest, which I'm glad to see come back.
Three minutes, Jerome.
So there's just a lot of positive things and I want to keep that going and hopefully you guys will make sure that happens. Thank you for your time. I'd love to stay, but business is business. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Kimberly Gray? Kimberly Gray? We didn't find her? Okay.
She would like to be called.
Okay. And who's next, Amanda?
The next one, I hope I pronounced the name correctly. Italo, Italo Furiere?
Italo Furiere.
Furiere, okay.
Downstairs.
Okay.
Okay. If we can have him ready? Sorry? Okay, yes.
Hello.
Hello, Mrs. Gray. This is Amanda Lisondo with the city of Harlingen. You signed up for the citizens communication. You have three minutes, ma'am. You may start now.
Okay, thank you. I just feel like the taxes are already extremely high in Harlingen and with COVID, the pandemic, people are still not recovered from losing their businesses and such, and to tax the homeowners even more is just, it's just wrong and needs to be a no vote. Thank you.
You're welcome, ma'am.
Good afternoon. My name is Italo Furiere. I'm from District 5. My representative. And fortunately for mayor and councilman, I'm not against taxes. I, as I used, I'm an immigrant and as I used to tell immigration back then in every U.S. officer, I love America and I love to pay taxes. However, I have two points to make to you. One is if you have persuaded all of us, and there's a lot of people here, to vote for you, you should also be able to persuade us to raise taxes on us and you should present that to us, even if you have the right to, to raise them without a vote, you should be able to persuade us that this is indeed needed and that it's not just a habitual tax raise because you always want to raise your budget. And with that in mind, we all know that our burden as citizens, just in America in general, has been greatly increased since 2020. You too are victim to some of the same increases that we are suffering and you as civil servants should be able to help us bear this burden and not just mandate a further burden upon us. So I plead with you, please, this is the worst time for you to do another tax increase on us. Now, I'm not against taxes, but I do hate property tax. I hate property tax. Property tax is immoral. Property tax goes against our right, our inalienable right, as Americans, to pursue happiness because what that means is that I'm always at risk of having a lien on my property. This is against the poor. If you raise property taxes in Harlingen, rents are going to go up. Poor people who are beginning to own their property, they might be, there will be a risk. Just as an example, that will cost me an extra $1,600 per year on top of what I already pay you, on top of what I already contribute to the city of Harlingen. And it is my property, is it not? And yet I hate property tax because in a way, it is never my property. It is immoral. It is wrong. It is against, it's contrary to my inalienable right to own property, to own my property. I will never own that property, especially if you keep going on taxes. So I plead with you, please, in, in the name of my district, in the name of all the people who have already spoken here, in the name of all the ones who are, who still will spoke because clearly the tide is against you, that you consider not raising taxes now and that you reconsider other ways, moral ways, to fund the budget. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you so much, sir. And I'll tell you, like I told the others, because you were outside, we welcome you to stick around. We are going to be talking about the tax rate and we'll give further details. I'm just repeating, I'm sorry, I keep repeating, you all are here, but for the ones that are not, so as soon as we get to that, we will discuss it. We can't interact with each person here, but I welcome you to stay. Thank you.
The next person is Joe Ray Wagner, and it's regarding Stig.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
The next one is Taylor Whitworth.
Whitworth? And what topic, Amanda?
Increase in taxes.
Who's next after her, Amanda?
It would be Freddie Mateo.
Is Mr. Mateo in the room? What about Freddie Mateo? And she didn't want to be called, Ms. Whitworth?
Yes, I just noticed that.
Okay, let's do that. And Amanda, if you can, when you put the phone to speaker?
Hello, it's Taylor.
Hello, Mr. Taylor. This is Amanda Lisondo with the city of Harlingen. You signed up to speak under citizens communication. I'm going, I'm going to set the clock at three, for three minutes, okay? You may start now.
Okay. Sorry. Hold on. Can, can I do it here in a little bit because I don't have my stuff in front of me, I'm sorry. I didn't know you guys were calling right now. I thought you were going to call a little bit later.
We'll call him at the end and hopefully he's ready then.
Okay, sir. Okay. Thank you, sir.
Please, thank you. I'll be ready. Thank you.
Mr. Mateo? Please state your name and your district, please, sir.
My name is Freddie Mateo from District 5. And first of all, I want to thank you all for listening to your constituents. And tonight, your constituents are here asking for your help. So I understand you want to increase the city's budget and it may even be for a noble cause as to wanting to, you know, raise employee or give employees raise. You know, who wouldn't want to give them a raise? I get that. Many of them do a really good job, but there's a lot of people downstairs right now that are tired of getting their pockets picked by tax entities. So unless members of this council have been living under a rock for the last year and a half, you know that the city of, of Harlingen has taxpayers that are struggling right now with the rising costs of energy bills, gas prices. Every item in their list of expenses has gone up. The only thing that has not gone up, I can pretty much be certain of this, is all of their paychecks have not gone up. Yet you want us to pay for an increase in expenses for you guys and for the city? That does not sit well with me and many of the people downstairs and many of the people who could not make it to this meeting from my district and all the districts in this city. So if any of you can relate, if you have kids, you can relate with this, if you have a nagging child in a department store who's throwing themselves on the floor, who wants a new toy on the shelf and will do anything to get it, but you as a parent have the power to tell them no because it's not in the budget. That's what you're asking us to do. You're telling us to cut back on our lifestyle and pay more to the city. So I ask you in the same way, isn't it better to control the city's expenses? Cut spending, find ways in your budget to ease the burden on people in the city? Quit taking advantage of the poor people, the people in, who have a fixed income. They don't, they don't get a raise. And if you say, "I'm not raising taxes, I'm lowering them," look at the rate, it's lowered. Yes, it's lowered, but the net effect is people are paying more, they're writing bigger checks to tax entities. And I urge every member in this council to please reconsider that because come election time, we will remember. There's a lot of people in the city who can't make it here and wish they could and I honestly wish you would make these meetings in a bigger place to accommodate more people because it's hot down there. The people downstairs, they want to be up here. We have plenty of venues here in town that we pay for...
Three minutes, Jerome.
...that will allow that. And I ask you respectfully, please reconsider this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mateo.
The next person is Ellen Salazar.
To be called or in person?
No, in person. Do we go to the next one?
Who's next?
The next one is Thomas Sinslink, I can't pronounce the name, Sinsinki or something like that?
Solinsky and Ellen?
Ellen Salazar.
Can we check on both of those?
The next one is Robert Leffwich.
All right, Mr. Leffwich.
Robert Leffwich, District 3. I just wanted to reiterate something that Jack had, had mentioned in his, his phone conversation. A lot of you guys weren't here two years ago when we had the, the city of Harlingen's largest single-year tax increase. It was over $2 million. It was a 12% increase and that was massive. And it was right when COVID was hitting and it didn't do any good because we had floods that year. People were even, not even living in their homes when they had that $2 million tax increase. So we, so we go to the next year. We have another $850,000 tax increase. Three of y'all weren't here. So let me help y'all put this in perspective. The city, the citizens of Harlingen have endured more tax increases than you guys are probably aware of. Y'all are looking at this $1 million increase and thinking, "Oh, it's just a one-time million-dollar increase." Well, when you add those up like Jack was referring to, it's now you've got a, in three years, you're, you've got a $5 million increase in annual budget just in the last 36 months and people are tired of it. It's affecting everything. City Hall is competing against small business. When you raise taxes $5 billion a year just in the city of Harlingen since 2019, you're competing with small businesses, you're putting single widow ladies, widow, single people that are in homes on fixed income, you're putting them at risk of losing their properties. We're basically feeding Linebarger, our delinquent tax collection agency, by doing that. And we had a, we had a presentation by Linebarger, Linebarger a few weeks ago. They are still actively churning delinquent tax accounts. The fact is, is if you look at the city finance, financial documents, since the 2019 tax increase that Mr. Mesmer was participated in, the delinquency rate has increased in the city of Harlingen from 99% to 97%. So we've increased the delinquency rate to 3% of the population, of the taxpaying population, and it has not gotten any better. So I... So I urge you to reconsider the fact that it's not just the $1 million that we're looking at tonight. It's the $2 million that was two years ago. It's the $850,000 that was added last year. And look at the amount. If we can't come up with some way to offset increases, we cannot sustain a million-dollar increase every year because that's going to snowball. And the fact is that another thing Jack brought up, you're going with the voter approval rate. That's the maximum rate that y'all can adopt without going to the city, without going to a citywide referendum to approve that rate. So you're maxing out what you can take without going to the voters. And I think that's just wrong. And I'll just end with that.
Thank you. The other two were not present? No, they called them. Who's next?
Then the next one is Frank Lozano.
Can we give them both two names to call?
Yes. Frank Lozano and Jesse Martinez.
I did see Mr. Martinez. Is he here in the room? No. I do appreciate everyone being so patient and hearing me say the same thing over and over. I do apologize, but there's reason for it. No Frank Lozano? Who's the next one on the list?
The next one is JV Garcia.
Okay. I'm wonderful. How are you, sir? If we can get Mr. Garcia, JV Garcia, next, and he can sit right here while Mr. Martinez is speaking.
Mayor, and the last one is David Day.
Hi.
Good afternoon.
Jesse Martinez, 1806 Haverford. I'm not going to repeat what the others have said, but the answer is cost effectiveness of everything we do, even at home. My daughter asked the other day, some time ago, "Dad, I need a new SUV. I have a large family," and this one says, "Look, we're in a pandemic. You fix what you got and wait and save a little every month." She did. Cost her $500, not $60,000, a $1,000 a month payment with insurance. What I'm trying to say is that they're right. You're maxed out, and we're going to be maxed out on infrastructure and other drainage, sewer, water. So they're right. I'm going to go to another thing because it's important. Legislative Committee. Mayor, I don't agree with the manager appointing just you, him, Rodel Garza, EDC, and the airport. We need District Three, District Five. We need all these entities in here under your leadership to go to Austin. I worked for Lozano, State Representative Senator Lozano, on the Transportation Committee back in the days, and on the Education Committee. We take legislation up there through two ways, not just lobbyists. He just knows the ropes. We do the initiatives. He does the ropes. We do the ropes with our state reps. We don't have state reps. We don't have a senator. We have Lozano. He used to be a state rep here. We will have state reps, but we need to prepare initiatives. You need to expand your group because by all of them being participating, they all belong to organizations that will get initiatives done. Now, the final thing, all these committees you went to, wonderful. Thank you very much. And I'm just going to make one point. If my granddaughter would have been bitten by a dog, that dog wouldn't be here today. I mean, in the body. One of those meetings in downtown, we have a dog and cat problem, animal. We're giving 400 grand to the animal shelter. Put them together with the dog catchers and cat catchers and possums, et cetera, and get rid of the bat animals, please. I thank you, and I hope you look forward to a challenging year because you do have a challenging year. We have expertise in the community too to help you in legislative, not only I, but others throughout the community. All these people, we have a lot of experts. Team up, and we win. Play the role game, we lose. Thank you.
Minister up.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez.
JV Garcia.
Mr. Garcia?
My time starting?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioners, mayor, thank you all for having me. Ladies and gentlemen of the jury, I mean of everybody here, thank you. My name is JV Garcia. I am a citizen first and foremost in this beautiful city of Harlingen. I am also serving my duty as a citizen in serving on the Planning and Zoning Commission here in Harlingen and on the Harlingen Waterworks Systems Board of Trustees. And I do this also with a background in engineering. As a professional engineer, I have 15 years of experience in the public and in the private sectors. And the purpose of my public comment today is to kind of clarify some news article that came out on today's front page news. Y'all may have seen it regarding the meeting that we had last Tuesday on the drainage ordinance. I was not there. I had COVID for the first time in this whole pandemic crisis, and I always wear my mask, but I still got it. But that's the reason why I was not there. But I would just like to clarify some basic misnomers regarding the newly created and adopted 50-year detention requirement. First and foremost, it's the cost. Everyone has asked, "How much is this going to cost?" No one has given a number, right? Okay, $300 or less for addressing the new development detention requirement cost. And I've put this in writing since 2019, 2020, when we were having multiple workshops on this. Now, I can explain why in a second, but just let me compare that to other costs that are actually raising, raising the cost of developing, which is inflation, right? Fuel costs for all of our equipment. But most significantly, lumber prices. $18,000 in just the last four months, lumber prices rose according to the National Association of Home Builders, okay? Not detention. Detention should not be the scapegoat. For some reason, it is on rising cost. It's not detention. When you have a plot of land, you need to do a balancing act with the volume of the soil that we have. And you have to do that to raise your foundation, right? You notice how everybody wants to build their homes higher, right, to avoid flooding? Well, you have to do that by code. There's a minimum elevation you have to build. Well, as engineers, we value engineer and do a balancing act of the existing soil. And we get the existing soil from the side to the house, make a pile, and you start building up, leaving depressions on each side of the home, right? Well, now you do that with every single lot, and there is your 50-year detention requirement without this misnomer that you have to install or dedicate one entire lot or one acre or two acres of just a detention pond. The engineer and the developer can choose to do that, but that's just one way that you can address the 50-year requirement. And with that, I hope I gave you all some clarification. Thank you all. Keep doing a good job. Thank you all for all you do. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Mr. David Day?
David Day, Stewart Place Road, I think. I'm a member of District Two? Five, sorry. I know he's my rep. And I'm here to follow up on what JV Garcia just said because up until January this year, he was my junior partner. He now has his own company. I've let him loose to spread his wings. But to put money where my mouth is on this drainage thing, which we have been of equal minds since when I first hired him eight years ago, is that one thing everybody in this room has in common is we've all been directly affected by drainage or we closely associated with someone who has. And we all live in areas that will, if not now, will in the future be prone to flooding because we've had this historical drainage requirement where I think it was five years. So with just a regular storm, water is getting released. With every new subdivision built, you're inundating the system that wasn't designed. This was an agrarian area. Our drainage districts were to take crop water off, not new subdivisions. So what I did, I have a six-and-a-half-acre lot on Stewart Place Road, and I hired cost engineering, just what he just said. Between each lot, by code, drainage has to flow away from the house six inches and 10 feet. Typical lot lines are five to 10 feet. So you're meeting in the middle between lots. Now you have your swell that has to go towards the street by code, by law. And so all the drainage is going to go towards the street. All you do is berm it up at the end. You bleed it out of a four-inch pipe. You meet the 50-year retention without any dedicated lots, without any increase in flow from new developments that's going to inundate our city requirements. I personally was affected by the flooding in a house that's been there since built in '57. And it didn't flood until it '19 flood. And the reason is, is because we had new developments on the corner of Stewart Place and the Expressway, and it's continued. And with each new development, there's more drainage and less we start holding that water back. If we can do that on-site, we can do it for dedicated lots, or as I did it, and I proved it can be done, is in on-site between homes, and there's no extra cost. You have to landscape your yard. You put pipes in for drainage and little planter areas anyway, so there's no extra cost for this. He said $300. My logs, it shouldn't be anything. In fact, they may save money because they don't have to build up in that area. They just leave it down. I proved it can be done. We need to, if not, as a structural engineer, I have to design a home for a 100-year windstorm event. But drainage, we were down at five, we're up to 25, we're going to go to 50. I mean, if you truly want to end the drainage problem here, you go to 100-year flood occurrence too to match the windstorm we had to design to. And that's all I have.
Thank you so much, Mr. Day. Have a wonderful afternoon. I think, is that? Oh, you were going to call back Mr.?
Taylor Whitworth?
Yes.
Hello?
Hello, Mr. Whitworth. This is Amanda again. You have three minutes, and I'm going to start the clock right now.
Okay.
You may speak now.
Taylor Whitworth, 82 Drive, Harlingen. Question number one, why would this raised at the time when the economy is doing so? People can barely afford their groceries and gas for their cars, and we're wanting to raise taxes? Number two, what benefit does the City of Harlingen have by raising taxes? Where does the money received actually go, and what does it? Number three, did the City of Harlingen not raise taxes last year and again in 2019? So I ask, why would you want to raise them knowing the negative impact on the families that are already struggling so much? Summarization is, I just want to understand why you would want to raise taxes causing citizens of Harlingen more money in the, when the economy is already struggling so much? I know to you, it probably doesn't seem like much of a raise, but for those living in the community, barely making ends meet, or living paycheck to paycheck, have worked hard to buy their own homes, and now we're going to have to pay more taxes. As a business owner myself, I see it every day when my employees are asking me for loans just to pay their light bill, put food on their table, and get medicine for their families. I know there's a cost to running a city, but honestly, I can't actually see where the money is going. I'm driving around Harlingen and seeing so many things that need to be done, worked on, cleaned up, but instead, we are putting sidewalks in areas that don't need them, paving roads that don't need to be repaved, and ignoring those that do. These are just a couple of examples that caused me to ask, what are we doing with the money? And how is it benefiting us as citizens? That's basically what I wanted to bring up in front of y'all today.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. So that is our Citizen Communication. We're moving on to item number one of Presentation and Recognition of Awards. I believe these are downstairs. If we can call Noah Huerta, Ramon Huerta, and Jasmine Thompson?
And then we can call, just a little bit out of order, the Harlingen Summer Track Program participants so that way they can be heard right after because they're part of the team. He's in college. Oh, okay. So your brother? Okay, wonderful. Well, we have Noah Huerta here and Jasmine Thompson, and we do want to recognize Ramon Huerta, who is out in college. But this is a recognition award presented to the Harlingen Summer Track athletes. This was a Texas Amateur Athletic Federation State Championship held in Corpus Christi, Texas on July 22, 2022. Fourth place in the 14 U 300 hurdles is Noah Huerta. And then we have second place in discus and fourth place in shot put, 18 U categories. I hope I'm doing this correctly, but that is Ramon's brother and Jasmine Thompson here. First place in shot put and first in discus, 18 U categories. Ms. Thompson also competed at the Nike Outdoor Nationals in Eugene, Oregon on June 18, 2022, and received first place in shot put Emerging Elite category. And the AAU Junior Olympic Championships in Greensboro, North Carolina on August 2nd and 3rd, 2022, was received fourth place in shot put and seventh place in discus, earning an All-American Honor in both events. Ms. Thompson has been named All Valley High School Track and Field Athlete of the Year, Summer 2022. So on behalf of the City of Harlingen, I would like to present this recognition award to three of you. I'm sure Ramon is watching from home, and his mom is really proud, so she's here as well. So I want to provide this in recognition from the City of Harlingen and all of you. Thank you. How incredible is that? And while they're here, we also want to recognize the Harlingen Summer Track Program participants. Can we call them in as well? I thought that was your son?
He said he was going to go pick up the award.
So do we have other students?
Yes, sir.
Yes, that's what I think we all have. Does the commission want to take a picture with you?
Yeah.
So you need to stand right here because you're leading. We're behind the, I mean, you're in front of the class. Are we missing anyone? No? Lots of proud parents in here. You can sit in the front. So, the City of Harlingen hosts the Summer Track Program every year, except for the last few years because of the pandemic, and we wanted to recognize these kids, the Harlingen Parks and Health and the City of Harlingen is very proud of all the participants in our Summer Track Program. Our kids competed in Regional Meet this year, held in Brownsville on July 7th and 8th, to qualify for the Summer Games of Texas. The City of Harlingen belongs to Region 2, which consists of 13 cities in the valley, as well as Gilreto. Roughly 2,500 boys and girls from ages 6 to 18 are registered in Region 2. Harlingen qualified 34 participants to compete at the State Meet this year, which is held July 21st through the 24th. The Texas Amateur Athletic Federation 2022 Summer Games of Texas was hosted in Corpus Christi this year. We competed against other cities and run clubs from all over the state in a span of four days, consisting of an estimated 4,000 participants. Amateur, recreational, and young Olympic hopeful athletes competed in 10 sports featured at various venues throughout the city and the county sports arena. We just want to congratulate again all of you for a job well done and amazing that you've represented the City of Harlingen, and we are all very, very proud of you. And in order to show our appreciation, we do have a recognition award for Mr. Mendes here. If you want to leave, which you got there.
This is a recognition award presented to the City of Harlingen Summer Track athletes. Summer Games of Texas hosted by the City of Brownsville, Texas. Medalist Jasmine Thompson, first place shot put and discus. And then Landon Tejada, third place shot put. The ribbon recipient was Carolina, oh, Caroline Fernandez, eighth place Povo, Fernando Quintanilla, sixth place, the 800-meter run. I hope I say this right. Jasim?
Jasim.
Jasim. More, fifth place.
I jump.
Riana Vina, sixth place 800-meter run. Jose Aldiano, seventh place, run marathon. And Landa de la Rosa, seventh on the 800 meters. Congratulations on all the, on your outstanding achievements, presented on the 7th date of September 2022. Bye, Mary.
Are there any of the moms and dads that want to take pictures? I'm going to make sure everybody got an opportunity. Thank you. Thanks again. Wonderful afternoon.
You want to take a picture next to the H? The city, the H symbol?
Thank you, gentlemen. We have a recognition here. We want to provide this recognition, the Making a Difference Award, presented to the American Legion, those 205 honor guard and secure officiation for their outstanding work and dedication, earning the services that have bettered the U.S. armed forces and their family. And on behalf of this, on behalf of the United States, I want to provide some of these. What an amazing. So I just learned that these fine gentlemen have done 131 services in the last month. Can they please just? Thank you for your service, Amanda. So recognition of the 2022 Law Enforcement Explorers. We have Alvino Rodriguez, Christian Rodriguez, Eric Ramos, and Pablo Ibarra.
Good evening, Commissioners, Mayor, Citizens. My name is Alfredo Albiad, I'm a deputy chief for the Harlingen Police Department, a committee member with the Harlingen Police Explorer Post 1018. A program that exists under the umbrella of the Voice Council of America and Chief Kester's permission. According to the Exploring website, Law Enforcement Exploring is a hands-on program open to young men and women who have completed the 8th grade through 20 years old, interested in a career in law enforcement. The program offers young adults personal awareness of the criminal justice system through training, practical experiences, competition, and other activities. Additionally, the program promotes personal growth through character development, respect for the rule of law, physical fitness, and good citizenship and patriotism. I myself am a product of the Civil Air Patrol Explorer Program in Brownsville. I started as an advisor with this program in 2004. Since then, we have Harlingen Police Explorers that have moved on to work with the Harlingen Police Department, U.S. Border Patrol, Homeland Security Investigations, U.S. Army, U.S. Navy, U.S. Marines. One in particular recently shook hands with President Biden and sent one of our officers a text telling him how the Harlingen Police Explorers prepared him for his military occupation. Today, we would like to recognize four young men, Alvino Rodriguez, Christian Rodriguez, Eric Ramos, and Pablo Ibarra, and three Harlingen Police Officers, Officer Mario Martinez, John Sledge, and Manuel Rosales, who made the trip to Gunnison, Colorado, to compete in the 2022 Law Enforcement Explorer Post Advisors Association of Colorado Competition. The event was held from July 10 through the 15th of this year. The Harlingen Police, the Harlingen Post was one of 22 teams to compete. The Harlingen Post competed in misdemeanor traffic stops, courtroom testimony, night tactical active shooter, family disturbance, cell search, unknown trouble, and suspicious person. The Harlingen Post came home with four trophies and two medals. First place night tactical active shooter, first place misdemeanor traffic stop, second place felony high-risk traffic stop, third place felony high-risk traffic stop, fourth place medal, family violence disturbance, and fifth place medal for domestic violence. We'd like to congratulate the Harlingen Explorers for their superior performance in Colorado, as well as the rest of the Harlingen Police Explorers. We would like to recognize the hard work and dedication by the advisors, Officers John Sledge, Mario Martinez, Manuel Rosales, Jessica Vargas, and Myra Mora. Thank you.
All right. That was really nice. Okay, now, item number two, approval of minutes. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Did you have any?
Yeah, there's some corrections that need to be made.
Okay.
If you look at the very beginning, give me one second, page. One of our packet still has Mr. Saucy as our interim city attorney. You need to scratch that. Don't say I never did anything for you, Mark.
Thanks for sticking up for me, Commissioner.
Yes, sir. And then on page six, line 21, there's just a space in Commissioner that just needs to be fixed. Otherwise, it's good to go.
You want to amend that motion, or?
Yeah, I move to amend Commissioner Pettis's motion that we approve subject to the amendments I just stated.
We still have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion passes. Thank you. And we have the consent agenda, we have items 3A through N. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Second.
All those in?
Move to make an amendment on 3A. It still has the previous mayor on the contract sign, signature line, I figured we should update that. Okay, perfect. You're already fixed. Thank you.
Are we good then?
Yes.
Okay. So we have a second?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. Thank you. All right. So, we're going to do some things a little bit different this evening. I recognize that a lot of residents of Harlingen have a lot of interest in some of the agenda items that are at the very end, or not at the end, but towards the middle, and it is a long agenda, so I'd like to take some things out of order, just to be respectful of everyone's time. So first, we are going to go to item number 17. Is Robert here?
Yes.
Public hearing to consider in ordinance on first reading for the adoption of the proposed City of the Harlingen Annual Budget for Fiscal Year 2023.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners. The Texas Local Government Code 102.007 requires the City Commission's vote to adopt the budget at a record vote. Exhibit A displays the total proposed revenues and expenditures and estimated fund balance by fund for fiscal year 2023. The proposed revenues are $94,914,344, expenditures are $933,327,724.
Mayor, I'd like to have a, make a PowerPoint presentation that kind of explains what, what Robert just talked about.
You can do the. Well, they can do the presentation.
Okay. Okay. This is the current tax rate for the City of Harlingen. This is a tax rate that we are currently in. If you note that the tax rate is .6198, or 61 cents, per hundred dollars worth of valuation. The rate on this column is a rate that we are proposing for the upcoming fiscal year. If you note, there's a decrease in a tax rate of 1.3492 cents. So the City of Harlingen is actually lowering the tax rate for the 2023 tax year. That reduction of 1.34 cents amounts to a reduction of $525,000 approximately. We have approximately a collection rate of 98% that we have budgeted for, and we have maintained throughout the years. So, so that tax rate, .606357, is going to be our new tax rate, which is a decrease from our current tax rate of .619849, and it's going to generate less revenue in that tax rate of, like I said, $525,000. Now, one of the things that we have to do because of the changes that the state legislature made is that we have to publish a notice of a tax increase, which is confusing, because we are generating more tax revenue, but we're not increasing the tax rate. And this is just a continuation of that notice that we have to publish, and we've already One of the reasons that we're actually increasing our, our tax revenue is the number of building permits that we issued. We had a total of 284 building permits that have been issued since October 1st, 2021, through, through today. They have a total value of $66,681,000. We also gave a 1% increase to employees earning over $75,000. That totaled $28,933. And then one of the things we've done is we've raised everybody's salary up to a minimum of $10, and that's going to cost the general fund an additional $118,000. So those salary adjustments totaled $980,000, and keep in mind, this is not including police and fire. And then we talked about new positions that we're going to be adding to the general fund. We've got two positions for the pegged marketing staff, a supervisor and a regular employee. It's going to cost us $181,970. We're adding a marketing position to the DID that's going to cause, at a starting salary of $40,000, that'll cost us up to $65,000. As you know, we're purchasing a vector truck, and we have to hire the two employees for that position. That's going to cost us $105,018. That's going to help with drainage and keeping our pipes clean, and just add a truck to provide in the service. And then, as a result of the meetings that we had with the developers, they, they mentioned that they would like to see some adjustments in our personnel that would make their, their process a little bit easier. So what we've done is we've added for this next fiscal year, a permit clerk. That's going to cost the general fund $44,961. We've added a P&amp;Z inspector for billing inspections for $49,000. Now, that's not the salary, that's salary plus benefits. And then we've added an inspector for engineering at a, at a cost of salary and benefits of $49,000. So those total new positions are going to cost almost half a million dollars, and the total of those new positions plus the salary adjustments totaled $1.4 million. Now, we've talked about this before. These are the, the capital purchases that we're making for the general fund. And this is the vector truck that we're purchasing for half a million dollars. Those total investments totaled $1.1 million towards the general fund. And then, if we talk, if we can talk about the insurance for a while. One of the things that we were facing this year was, we went out for bids, was the increase that was submitted back to the city had a 19% increase, which was about $1.4 million. Working with a consultant and with our, 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 not sellers are insurance, we were able to get that, that reduced to $534,000. Now, we had to make some adjustments to the, to the benefits that were provided by United Health Plan, but that resulted in going from a 19% increase to a 7% increase. That was a reduction of $661,000 in the, in the added price that was given to the city. This is the actual portion that the City of Harlingen would have, would have had to pay, $1 million. This amount up here included the, the city waterworks airport and the Housing Authority. But that reduction of $661,000 was just towards the City of Harlingen, so ended up paying $386,000 increase. Then we also worked on reducing the agent fees from $380,000 down to $93,000. Of course, we sought agents as well, and that, that resulted in a savings of $187,000. So the total reduction in proposed costs that would have been charged against the city was reduced by $848,000. And then one of the things that we've added to the budget was $450,000 to, to be added towards the, the cost for electricity, and we are, we're pretty close to getting that, that locked in. Unfortunately, our consultant, Eric Holt, got COVID about a week and a half ago, so he's been working from home, so he's, he's been, he's been struggling with getting some rates, but he's, he's working, he's working on it. And then one of the things that we did also, out of the Hotel Motel Fund, this does not, does not impact the general fund, was we added a one-time adjustment of $50,000 to the Harlingen Performing Arts Data to be used towards our AC expenses. And then we also added the Hotel Motel Lodging Association fee of $10,500 to allow all our hotelers in town to register with that site at no cost to them. And then we've had increases in fuel costs. Now, luckily, they're, they're coming down, but we did adjust the departments just in case they went back up again, and that cost to the general fund is $100,000. So that's been factored into this year's budget as well. So if we look at the, the adjustments that we've made to the general fund, and we've done all this without increasing taxes, we actually lowered the tax rate by 1.3 pennies. We have total cost to, for the police and fire, we have salary adjustments, the new positions, the new equipment, health insurance adjustment, the electrical costs we may end up paying, the adjustment to the Humane Society of $113,000, that'll get them to $400,000. The added increase to fuel, all those adjustments totaled $1.4 million, $4.1 million. Now, if you look at all these, all these categories, these are not, these are not wants, these are needs that the city had to make, not just for our employees, but for capital equipment purchases that we had to make, for health insurance coverage, for electrical costs, and for fuel adjustments. So that, that in essence is what Robert's going to cover in his presentation for the ordinance to adopt the new budget. Are there any questions from the Commission?
Yes.
Gabe, did I hear you say we were lowering taxes by 1.3 cents?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Really?
Yes.
Okay. So I do have a couple of questions, just so, for some clarification. Gabe, thank you so much for providing this information, and I know that myself and probably the rest of the Commission have been, you know, fielding questions this week about the, the tax rate, and I think it's really important for people to really understand what it is that we're doing. So first and foremost, we want to clarify whether we are increasing taxes by 4.5% because that's something I've gotten a lot of phone calls saying, you know, "Mayor, why are you increasing the taxes by 4.5%?" And you went over the legislation that capped, and can you go back to, yes, that slide? Can you explain so that way the people at home and the people that are here and those that spoke earlier can understand how that's not possible for us to increase by 4.5%?
Mayor, that's an accurate statement. We didn't increase taxes at all. The reason that we're having to publish this rate that says public notice of tax increase is because anytime a city generates more revenue than it did the prior year, the state makes you publish this notice of tax increase, even though we're not increasing taxes, we're increasing revenue. And it just wasn't in the, the adverbalum side, it was also on the sales tax side. We increased our sales tax revenue by a million dollars. So because we did that, the state is making us publish this notice, even though we were not raising our taxes, we're actually lowering them by 1.3 cents.
So we are lowering the tax rate, however, we're generating more revenue than we did last year?
Yes.
Correct? And some of that revenue is because, from your presentation, there was over $60 million in new construction? Is that correct?
Yes.
So these, these homes that are being built and, and all this new construction at a value of $666 million, nearly $67 million, were not on the tax rolls on the previous year. Is that correct?
And they're not on the tax rolls this year.
Right. On this year.
They're going to be at it next year.
So this projected growth of, of revenue that is, is, that we've been hearing from the community, that is factored in this, this, these taxes that you'll collect from these new properties?
That's correct.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So there's gonna be additional revenue because there's more properties in Harlingen. Is that, is that accurate?
Yes, that's accurate.
Okay.
Senate Bill 2 caps our, our increase at 3.5, whereas in the past, we used to be able to increase it by 8%. And so Senate Bill 2, when it came in two years ago, there's no way we can go above 3.5% in our increase. So you're right.
I was just going to make that point, Mayor, that that's, that's correct. It would be impossible for us to raise taxes by more than 3.5% because the state would make us go to the voters for that.
So, for example, if everyone in the Rio Grande Valley decided Harlingen is the place to be, and everybody moved to Harlingen, and there was, you know, a billion dollars in new construction, we still could not, even though that we have a tax rate, we would have to lower it substantially so that way we don't increase by 3.5%.
And that's what happened to us in this current year. That's why it was pointed out that we were at .619849, but because we have sales tax collections that are, .5 of it is, is property tax relief. So, so the rate does come down because of that property tax relief.
So, so let me see if I understand, if I may. So that we're reducing taxes by 1.3 cents, right?
That's correct.
Well, good. There, there's a good echo in the room.
Yes.
And, and then the other thing is, we're reducing our taxes because our revenues have gone up, and the state says, even though you have a higher sales tax and higher property from new property, commercial residential, you can't increase that by more than 3.5% in revenues. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So thus, our revenues have gone up, so now we have to reduce our taxes to keep the state happy, correct?
The tax rate, that's correct.
Tax rate. Thank you.
So, on your PowerPoint, Gabe, you said there was a, a total of $4 million, or what was that?
Oh, for the expenses on the general fund side, yes.
$4 million, yeah. So $4,172,392, which far exceeds the new revenue that we will get this year. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And, and I think that I can speak, I hope I can speak for this entire Commission to say that we are going to do our best to not have any wasteful spending. However, we want to ensure that our police and fire are going to have their $470,000. If it was up to me, it'd be even more than, even more than that. I do think that we have additional, we could use an additional 10 officers, and we can work really hard to see if we can do that, but by no means are we going to be wasteful in, in our spending. But that figure is what is going to be, at a minimum, additional from the general fund, right?
That's going to be an additional expense to the general fund for this upcoming budget, budget year.
Okay. Does anybody have any other questions?
Mayor, and I would like to point out that, that these are not wants, they're needs, and a lot of the requests for that came from the developers' meeting that we had, where they said, "Look, you have to make these changes because we, we can't be waiting a day or two for some of the subdivisions to be inspected or, or even the units because there's so much construction going on right now." And so this is a result of that meeting that we had.
Because, Gabe...
Go ahead.
The faster we can work with the developers and with the house builders and all aspects, then the faster they can complete their projects and get more properties built and sold, which increases further tax revenues, which can allow us to lower taxes again in the future, correct?
That's correct. And there's actually two subdivisions going up right now that hopefully will start issuing building permits for, in the next few months on, in the city. And so we're hopeful that, that that trend will continue into the next year.
And so from that meeting, what we learned is, we need to help our builders and developers to quickly do what they do in a safe and efficient and legal manner, correct?
That's correct.
And in addition to that, earlier, we heard someone speak as to, that there was an issue in Harlingen with dogs and cats in the neighborhood, I think specifically in District 2. And so as much as we would like to give the Humane Society millions of dollars because of the amazing work that they do in the community, we're kind of limited because we don't want to be wasteful in our spending, but we have increased, I believe, about $114,000 or $113,000 to the Humane Society so they can continue to do the wonderful work that they do, and hoping that we can work together with other funds that are designated to help in this kind of issue to also give them additional help. But that's also something that we are adding to the general fund that we hadn't anticipated before. Is that correct?
$113,000, yes, Mayor, that's correct. That'll be added to the general fund as an expense. On top of the $287,000 that we gave them already to bring it up to $400,000.
So we're giving $400,000, and then we're going to work really hard to see if we can help them in other, in other ways. And, and I, I want to say I did go out and, and look at the facility and see the wonderful work that, that they're doing out there, and so we want to commend you for that, and we want to support you as much as, as much as possible. I want the community to know also that we are doing it in a responsible manner because no one wants to see an increase in their taxes, and if there's other ways that we can do that, then we are definitely going to explore those, those ways. Commissioner Lopez?
Yep. Gabe, with the increase of property values, right, like, our, every year, the tax assessor comes out, checks out my house, and then it seems like they keep raising the property, my property value, even with us reducing the tax rate, aren't, isn't the city still going to be collecting more in taxes?
Yes, we are, and that's, that's, there are two reasons. You generate more revenue from your adverbalum tax, or one is new construction, either in new construction or additions to whatever structure exists that adds value to it, and the other is from what the appraisal district does, is if they increase the value of your property, then that'll generate the, the value that it's taxed at. But we actually order tax rate by a penny, so that should make some difference in, in what each individual owner pays.
But I'm still going to pay more in city taxes this year than I did last year.
It depends. If your property taxes were, if the appraisal value of your, of your residential unit was raised, then yes, you will. If it wasn't, then, not on the city side, you won't, but keep in mind that when you get your tax bill, it generally has the city, the school district, and the counties. So if any of those other entities raise their rate, then it's going to impact the property taxes that you pay, not to the city, but to those jurisdictions.
So it comes down to the appraisal?
Yes, the appraisal. And then also the other jurisdictions, if, for instance, Cameron County District Number Five has to raise revenue to pay for debt, so they increase their rates by, say, three pennies, then that's going to impact the, the taxes that you pay, not to the city, but to the District. That's just an example.
But if I heard you correctly, there may be an increase based on the appraisal. Some will and some will not, depending on, on their particular property, but we're sharing in that cost because the City of Harlingen is going to collect about $500,000 less based on that tax rate.
Because of the, because of the reduction, that, that 1.3 cents means, turns it to a $500,000 loss in revenue.
Right. So hopefully that helps a little when that appraisal, you know, certain homes are appraised at a higher, a higher value. And I think that we've all pretty much experienced that. can do that, then we are definitely gonna explore those, those ways. Commissioner Lopez?
Yep. Gabe, with the increase of property values, right, like, are, every year, the tax assessor comes out, checks out my house, and then it seems like they keep raising the property, my property value, even with us reducing the tax rate, are, isn't the city still gonna be collecting more in taxes?
Yes, we are, and that's, that's, there are two reasons, you, you generate more revenue from your adware and tax, or one is, uh, new construction, um, either in, in new construction or additions to whatever, uh, structure exists that adds value to it, and the other is from what the appraisal district does, is if they increase the value of your property, then that'll generate the, the value that it's taxed at, but we actually order our tax rate by a penny, so that should make some difference in, in, in what each individual owner pays.
But I'm still gonna pay more in city taxes this year than I did last year.
It, it depends, if your property taxes were, uh, the, if the appraisal value of your, of your residential unit was raised, then yes, you will. If it wasn't, then, not on the city side, you won't, but, uh, keep in mind that when you get your tax bill, it generally has, uh, the city, the school district, and the counties, so if any of those other entities raise their rate, then it's gonna impact the property taxes that you pay, not to the city, but to those jurisdictions.
So it comes down to the appraisal?
Yes, the appraisal, and then also the other jurisdictions, uh, if, if, for instance, Cameron County Drainage District Number Five has to raise revenue to pay for debt, so they increase, uh, their rates by, say, three pennies, then that's gonna impact the, the taxes that you pay, not to the city, but to the drainage district. That's just an example.
But if I heard you correctly, um, there may be an in, increase, um, based on the appraisal, some will and some will not, depending, um, on, on their particular property, but we're sharing in that cost because the City of Harlingen is gonna collect about $500,000 less based on that, uh, tax rate.
Because of the reduc, because of the reduction, uh, that, that 1.3 cents means, uh, turns it to a $500,000 loss in revenue.
Right. So hopefully that helps a little when that appraisal, you know, certain homes are appraised at a higher, a higher value, and I think that we've all pretty much experienced that. I've yet to meet anyone that says, hey, didn't, you know, the appraisal didn't come out higher in my home, so I think.
Mine did.
It went down.
Mine actually decreased, yeah.
Okay, well, we all need to move.
Into my neighborhood, yeah.
So, um.
You live in Harlingen?
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
Okay, so, so we're gonna talk later, um, but, you know, in addition to, to what you mentioned, there are, so the City of Harlingen is not the biggest taxing entity for the City of Harlingen, right?
No, the school district is.
And so, so there's a school district, there is South Texas ISD, there's a drainage district, there's all these other entities.
Cameron County.
That make up the tax bill, so.
Yes.
I would encourage everyone to, to look at that rate also and, and, you know, do your research and, and ensure that, that you are, um, having your voices heard in all platforms or in all entities.
So, so, Gabe, you said, did I hear you correctly, by reducing property taxes by 1.3 cents, we're going to collect $500,000 less?
We're, we're losing that revenue.
Yeah.
So, yes.
Right, 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 so the taxpayers collectively are going to save a half a million dollars by this movement, more or less?
More or less.
Just a quick note, in comparison to all the cities in, in the Rio Grande Valley, I think that the City of Harlingen has one of the lowest, um, tax rates, property tax rates in the valley.
Our neighboring San Benito is higher than, than Harlingen, right?
Right.
Do you know?
I think it was like, it was at least 70 cents.
Right, so about 20 cents more or so, or?
Yeah, I think there's only, I think Mission maybe lower than us, but I think a, a, across the board, uh, along the valley, we are one of the lowest, uh, property tax rates.
I should have, I apologize, I should have had a slide for that, but I, I don't.
That's okay, I think that the people in Harlingen care about Harlingen, and I understand 100% and hopefully that there's been more clarification, um, as to why the tax rate is being set, and you're gonna continue on about.
Um, if we can move on to the public hearing and then we could go on, onto the vote.
Okay.
I have a question for you, sir. On the proposed revenues, you have it at, uh, we have it at 94,914,000, uh, 300 and...
Forty-four.
Forty-four. And then your proposal, your proposed expenditures are a little bit less of 93,000, 93,327, um, and change, there's a difference of 1.5 million plus.
So, those include all of the, all of the funds of the city, so on one of the, uh, on the Exhibit A, and that, that's actually, um, with those new positions that were added, I think that went down a little bit, but, uh, on your Exhibit A, it goes by fund.
Does this, uh, proposed revenue include the 4. somewhat million new, uh, new employees and everything else?
Yes.
And we still have a surplus of over?
Well, it, it doesn't include, I think, the last three, the, the billing inspector and the, um, the permit clerk.
So, so you're looking at, what's the difference?
Uh, it came down to like 300 and... 341,560 in the general fund.
So we can add another, or reduce this by another 300,000 and change? There's 1.5? You, follow my argument if possible. We're looking at 1.5 million in surplus, correct?
Yes, but not all that is to the general fund.
Yeah, that's not all general fund.
To the general fund?
No.
I think the general fund's only 300,000.
Yeah.
Out of that million dollars or plus, only 300,000 is attributable to the general fund, everything else is to either enterprise funds or, or some of the other funds that we have.
Right.
So you can't, you can't take money from, say, uh, sanitation, which is enterprise fund, and merely offset some of the expenses in the general fund.
Right.
So the, the number that you wanna look at is 300,000, what is it?
341,560, yeah.
300,001?
Yeah, so e- each one of those funds stands alone, so, um, on some moment, because we have, uh, motor vehicle replacement, that's why it's so high, because on, on the motor vehicle replacement, we do, uh, save for purchasing vehicles in the future because the departments purchase out of that vehicle, vehicle, uh, replacement fund.
Okay, let me ask you another, well, actually, this is what I'm, I'm looking at as well. I can very reluctantly accept this, but I'll accept it on this following condition, okay? Any new items that we're looking at purchasing, I wanna make sure that we do a cost analysis and we absolutely need them, okay? I'll give you an example, the Vector truck. Last year it was at 400,000, I asked for something, that fell to the wayside, now it's 500,000, okay? We had a presentation here, okay? I asked, I wasn't sure if we had two Vector trucks or one, push came to shove, we do have two, but one is constantly under repair, okay? So we're gonna replace that one with another one, all right? Now we'll go back to two, and I asked for the information as to where is this Vector truck being used? Now, we gotta take it a step further. What is the life span of a Vector truck in hours, total hours? And what do we have with the one that's out of sync, how many hours have we actually used that? And then we have to look at the one that's supposed to be functional, okay? We're looking at one that was from 2007, that's been under repair for who knows how long, then we have another one that was purchased in 2019. I don't know how much that, that was, that, that cost, if it was 300,000, 350, or whatever it was. The question now is, have we put it to good use, okay? I did get a report a couple of days ago that I haven't been able to dig in and find out how much of that is actually being, if it's being used to its complete, really good use, okay? Because if it's not, we're spending 500,000, but thank God, I mean, we could still use this other one and repair the other one if we ever get the parts. To get it.
We, we all got the same report, and I thought it was a fabulous report showing that machine's used all the time in all five districts.
Well, I tell you what, I beg to differ, because if we had it used all the time, I would not be getting the calls that there's flooding in people's yards, okay?
Yards don't flood, they're designed to have water.
No, sir, they don't.
Okay, let's, let's not do a back and forth, so you can move forward, please.
At the end of the day, I would like to see a cost analysis on any ticket item that we're looking at purchasing that's over 100,000, okay? Across the board, all right? If we need it, let's take a look at it, okay? What I'm afraid of, and this is, I mean, thank God, it really bothers me to know when to have people come up here and remind us just how much in the past three years the city has collected and keeps on going up and up. Yes, we're giving them a little bit of a reduction, but at the end of the day, thank God, it, price of gasoline is still over three bucks, pushing forward. It's been there, it's gonna, it's gonna hurt us, okay? We need to be responsible, okay? And this is something I've been preaching since I was here six weeks after I got sworn in, okay? I'm still concerned over the insurance, but I'm not gonna get into that, all right? This is just a Vector truck, that's one example, and we can keep on going day in and day out as to where we have what I believe is wasted, okay? We need to verify that, thank God, we, we're not out there buying new trucks, new vehicles for employees, they all want, and I would be right there, I would want to raise, but unfortunately, that race is coming in here, this department gets a new, a new vehicle and bye-bye races. Oh, you know what, I need an assistant to the assistant to the assistant, let's hire some more people. When we turn around and we have a meeting, okay, that was brought up by developers and contractors, and thank you, Mayor, for bringing that up to our attention, okay? We heard specifically from them how much the planning and zoning needs help. Personally, we should have known that a long time ago and addressed it several years back, and to make things even worse for us, we had a meeting last week, and we're told, geez, you know what, we need another 170 million of two years ago's monies, dollars, to work on our water issues and our wastewater issues. We're gonna help them out. And what happens if we do get into a recession in the near future? Where are we gonna be at? Are we gonna turn around and say, taxpayers, we need some more money? When we kinda try to lessen this a little bit more? We need to be self, we have to control ourselves and not just grab money and spend it. Yes, we're saving a few bucks, but at the end of the day, that $20 on a hundred thousand dollar home, property, that's, that's significant for some people. I do realize that Leinberg and Gogan are, are collecting for us, and I do have, I've always had an issue with them. Why? Because their fees are too high. That's my argument, I, I can and I reluctantly will accept this, and I'm asking you, and I'm asking my fellow commissioners, and I'm asking you, sir, not to turn around and just because we pass a budget, no, October 2nd, boom, we're, we're buying everything brand new, okay? We need to control ourselves and not spend so much.
Commissioner, I, I agree, and the only thing that we can actually purchase are what items have been approved in the budget. We can't go out and buy anything that isn't approved by the commission, so if we, if we need to buy anything else, we need to come before you and get your approval, so.
Let's go back to this Vector truck, okay?
Miss, Commissioner Morales, will you, I don't know if you wanna, um, hold off on this, because we're not going to vote, or your, the commission isn't gonna vote on it yet, we're gonna open it up for a public hearing, and then we'll do the vote if you wanna, so that way the people that are waiting can come and speak and then you can...
That's fine.
Before we, Robert presents. Thank you so much. At this point, we're going to open it up for a public, the public hearing, um, is there anyone here that wishes to speak for or against the adoption of the proposed City Ha, Harlingen Annual Budget for Fiscal Year 2023?
Robert Luthwich, District Two, I just wanted to thank, uh, Commissioner Mesmer for not hitting us with another 500,000 dollars in taxes on top of this 1 million dollars, uh, but obviously the state capped it, so, but let's go to, let's talk about something else, you're talking about, uh, we heard from Gabe and he kinda, he kinda tried to clarify that tax notice, and I just wanted to read something that, uh, is in the, actually is part of the state constitution, and it's called "Truth in Taxation." And truth in taxation is a concept embodied in the Texas Constitution that requires local taxing units to make taxpayers aware of tax rate proposals and to afford taxpayers the opportunity to limit tax increases. So the fact is that if you notice on the, on the notice, the very bottom is the amount of levy against all properties, it's a million dollars, and the, the notice also explains what the voter approval rate is, which is the exact rate that's being proposed, and that rate, Mr. Mesmer, if you wanna read the Truth in Taxation, it's on the Controller's website, it is mandated and capped. It's not something that you're benefit, you're, you're not providing that to the citizens of Harlingen, that was legislated as a cap to protect citizens of Harlingen from being overtaxed without having a citywide referendum. And I just wanted to, to clarify that the notice is, is specified by legislation to clarify what's going on. It has nothing to do, the rate that you keep hanging your hat on, Mr. Mesmer, is only a variable in the overall formula of tabulating the tax burden for citizens. It's just, you're presenting smoke and mirrors with regards to that. So the fact is, it's a million dollar increase, it was an 870,000 dollar increase last year, it was a 2 million dollar increase the year before, and every year, as you grow the levy, that 3.5% allows you to grow it even further the next year and the next year. So the fact is, is that Commissioner Morales is right, you have to tighten the belt like we have to do as citizens in small business or in our homes, and I, I would appreciate if y'all would dig a little bit deeper and try to shave some more of this rate down and not just accept the voter approval rate, which is the maximum rate allowed. The fact is, yeah, we did have growth, but if you look at the numbers of that million dollars, 600,000 dollars of it are valuation increases that small businesses and families are gonna have to come up with, it's not the 400,000 dollars in taxes generated on the 30 million dollars of new development, there is a portion, a component of that million dollars that's gonna affect households and businesses. Thank you.
Mr. Luthwich?
So, good evening, three minutes, right? Okay, so just bottom line, thank you, I heard you speak, Morales, and I would like to hear more of you speak up for us in District Two, Daniel, because let me tell you something, yada, yada, get all this budget stuff, it doesn't matter to me, y'all can keep on talking, stop building, stop approving all these developments, fix the problems that need to be fixed, mer se pulvera, out with the old, start something new. Every department has their hands in the cookie jar, everyone. I, y'all increasing taxes, it is a fact, it is on my mortgage bill, it is on my escrow, it is on my taxes, anyone disagrees, I can bring you my mortgage statement, because it has increased and it, it will continue to increase, that's a fact. Now, other things that, um, you know, like I stated, every commissioner is here to oppose or deny certain things, and like I said, you know, we are the taxpayers, we, we need more of, of the commissioners to stand up, exactly what he did. What are we using the money for? We're being taxed for the schools, from the entity, water company, whatever, more taxes there, more tax, more city taxes for everything, how much longer? Make this district, all these districts beautiful, stop all these developers from coming into our town, fix the problems that need to be fixed, and then move forward, then accept it, because otherwise than that, we're gonna be stuck in the same place. So I, I encourage y'all to do the, what Mr. Morales just did, stick up for your people, because that's what we appointed every single one of you guys for, not to work for anybody else. We need someone to speak up for us. I shouldn't have to be here, sick and stuff, with cancer and stuff, because nobody's doing their job, I don't wanna pay no more. I have, I have kids to look over, I rather, I rather spend it on helping kids and other things in our city than having to pay more taxes, how much more is the city gonna take from us? How much? I wanna know from everybody, how much more are you gonna allow this to happen and, and everything, oh, the more oppressed neighborhoods, they more oppressed, and over here is more beautiful, and, and, and over here is ugly? If you were to make it better, Harlingen will be better together, not separated. That's my, my final thing, I don't, and then what, what about other grants? Y'all get so many grants, 30 million here to this department, that department, and why do we need any more engineers? I was looking at your, your proposal thing, what is all this indication of? What do you need all that stuff for? You still haven't solved the problem, the drainage, so why do you need more engineering, all this other stuff? Question. I would encourage you to research more and more on what's going on in this, whatever it is that, that y'all have on this proposal list, please, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ramos.
Good evening, Antonia Sanchez, uh, thank you, Mr. Morales, I'm from Precinct Four, and I wanna thank you for speaking out for the, for the people from Harlingen. I wanted, I, I just wanna have, uh, to let you all know, Precinct Four, our alleys, caliche, dirt, you go down to the Heights Street and all that, oh, pavement, what's the difference? It's still Harlingen. I wanna see that for our precinct, okay? Also, I hear about all this budget and all this stuff of coming in with, with, uh, the truck and all this stuff, I've yet to seen the sweeper go by my house for like two or three years now, asked, wh- wh- where are the sweepers that used to come around very often? We only have two, and one of them is broken, can't be fixed. I don't see anything of that in the budget, we need to get more of those to get out this, to those streets where all the grass is growing in this, in the street. And I'm gonna go way back, but I remember when Mayor Card was mayor, our streets did not look like that. Do the research and look back into some of those pictures, how Harlingen really... Do the research and look back into some of those pictures, how Harlingen really looked. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Hello again. Freddie Mateo, District 5. I want to thank you all again for listening to your constituents. And as many people up here have already mentioned, we are tired of getting our pockets picked. And I see here, I stuck around for the meeting because I wanted to see what else happens. You know, a few people come up and say their piece and they leave. But then you guys get to vote on it and nobody really stays, stick around to see you guys vote for it. It seems to me that all these charts you guys put up, you've already allocated all these funds. Correct me if I'm wrong, but you've already, you've already placed our tax money, it's like placing the cart before the horse. You already know where everything is going. You're, it's like you're counting on this, like you've already made up your minds. And I want to thank Mr. Morales. Thank you for standing up for your district. I'd like to see more of that. A lot of people would. I understand that, you know, you guys would want the best, you know, for the employees and the cities. We all do too. But at the end, it doesn't matter, Mr. Mesmer, it doesn't matter if we're lowering the tax rate. Is that right? Yes, you are. But bottom line is, it's coming out of our pocket anyway. We're still having to pay. We're the ones that have to pay more. So I urge you guys to reconsider this. I might be the only person here, like the few people that are here, it's a small drop in the bucket compared to the rest of the people in Harlingen that wish they could be here. But I urge you to please reconsider this. Find a way to stop spending. We have to do it in our households. We ask you to do the same. Stop the spending. Save a little. That's what we have to do. We have to cut back on our expenses. Why can't the city do the same? I respectfully ask for you to reconsider this.
Good afternoon. I've heard the term reluctant and certainly that lady that has a malady with her illness didn't want to get up here, and neither did I. But just before the commencement of this public hearing under Texas law, the Finance Director made a quip that y'all take a lot of comfort in, that Harlingen is one of the lowest tax rates in the valley and Mission might be one that's less. But McAllen is lower than Mission. McAllen is twice as large as Harlingen by any measure. And as this lady mentioned, probably the streets are better over there too. But there are 13 other cities in the Rio Grande Valley that the Finance Director indicated that are lower than Harlingen. And if Boswell wasn't one of the ones that was higher, the population would probably be greater in those that have lesser taxes. And I had no intention of being up here because I didn't do the research. Somebody else copying them. But Boswell was brought up and we've sort of also gotten into that niche where I could probably cite 10 things right now that the Finance Director has not done and they're gonna say that they're in compliance with the law because that's been the norm in Harlingen. But that doesn't necessarily make it right. Just because Trump thinks he's above the law, we don't have to think of ourselves as above the law. So I wouldn't have gotten up here, but I just wanted to at least clarify that there are many cities in the valley that have a lower tax rate. McAllen, like I said, is at least a dime lower than you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Frank Lozano, I live at 218 East Austin Avenue, Harlingen, Texas. I come to speak against the proposed tax rate. I actually did do the research here and I have all of the values for both Cameron and Adelco County. I'm just gonna, for the record, list out a few of them that are lower than Harlingen. Harlingen's kind of middle of the pack. Laguna Vista, .404. Palm Valley, .515. South Padre Island, .313. Rancho Viejo, .45. Bayview, .25. City of Los Indios, .48757. And those might be smaller cities. McAllen has, and this is, by the way, 2021, pulled from the Texas Comptroller's website, most latest values, McAllen's tax rate is .4956. This is just as mattering as some of the other cities, a comparable size and value. I'm a resident of Harlingen, lived here my whole life, own a few properties, don't really feel it's deserved that when the appraisals are going up, that we need to be paying extra, taking food out of our children's mouths. You know, we have to feed them, clothe them, do all that kind of thing, live our lives. We're not a very wealthy city. However, we are a potentially desirable city. To quote Sun Tzu, "You attack what is weak, you defend what is strong." We need to compete with the other cities. We need to be a desirable city to live in. If you want to increase the revenue, what you do is you attract other people to come live here, to come buy houses, to improve them, to make, get properties that are higher appraised. You don't do it by, you know, squeezing a rock dry, essentially. So I just wanted to let the board know that Harlingen is not among the lowest tax rate. In fact, it's essentially around middle of the pack for the valley. And for those reasons and for the reasons of, you know, my own wallet and those of my fellow citizens, I firmly ask this board to reject the increase over no revenue and to push us back down to the .59 value, at the very least. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, Commissioners, Ms. Mayor. My name's Omar Verreal. I'm in District 5. I'm a Republican. I love a tax decrease. So I just want to thank you all. I've heard a lot of pushback and I just don't quite understand it. The tax rate that you all do control, you all are lowering that for us. I do, I think I grabbed that. I know there's other entities that are maybe causing our tax rates to decrease, increase. But for what you all do control, I just want to say thank you for lowering our taxes.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name's Enrique Abundis. And I first want to say thank you to Mr. Frank Morales and the other three gentlemen who were paying attention when people were speaking. You may not agree with Robert, you may not agree with Robert, but you were paying attention. Two things I noticed by watching was Ms. Norma Sepulveda, you had something else to look at when somebody else was speaking. That's very irritating. When someone speaks in public, you should give them your utmost attention, especially if they voted for and they wanted you to check something to change. Mr. Mesmer, you've done it again. You're doing it again right there, you see? You're very unprofessional, you're rude. Whenever you want something to stop, Norma, I noticed, you put a halt to it immediately. A couple of days ago, Robert wanted to speak and you didn't allow him to speak when you could have. This is a lot of deja vu of the previous administration. I didn't vote for you so I can have the same thing over again. Do you understand that? You were with your paperwork and that's just very rude. Going back on Mr. Morales. And excuse me for being very passionate about this, but if you're not losing sleep at night on what people are thinking and what they want, how the city to be run or what their thoughts are, I don't want you as a commissioner. Mr. Frank was brave enough to stick up in front of everybody. I'm not sure what everybody else's thoughts are, but I congratulate Mr. Frank Morales. Because he's not the first person who's told me this. I've spoken with other administrators of the city who said, you know, Enrique, we can't do this because I can't get this approved. I'm trying to fix the city, I'm trying to get this picked up and I can't do it because I won't get approved. I'm always maintaining something. I can't get it approved. They left. Second of all, going back to the deja vu, it just seems that before, whenever we would come here with Mr. Boswell, the decision was made. And someone made up a point earlier that when you come up here and you have these hearings, you already have these proposals, you already have these budgets. Your minds are already met. So why do you have these? Is it just a horse and pony show? Is it smoke and mirrors? When you were running for a campaign, Norma, we couldn't get you out of the streets. You were everywhere. You wanted people to listen to you. Are you out there asking people, hey, what do you think about the tax increase? Are you doing that? It's difficult, right? Because now you're in. You don't need to listen very well anymore. And that's what it feels like on this side. So if I were you, if you really want to stay in power, if you want to stay in your position where you're at, revert to how you ran your campaign and talk to people. You were shaking everybody's hand, asking questions. Are you doing that now? Are you losing sleep at night? Every one of you, are you losing sleep?
Minister of.
Thank you, Frank.
Thank you.
Thank you, Frankie. Is there anyone else who would like to speak for or against? Thank you.
Norma, you don't have anything to speak, I'm sorry. Hello, Commissioners. My name is Lorenga Larza and I'm from District 1. I also didn't come prepared to speak. I came to listen because I wanted to learn a little bit about this increase in the tax. And at this point, I can be honest. I don't know if I'm for it or against it. That's why I'm here, because I want to see how, I want to hear if it even benefits, the pros and the cons. But I will say that in my observation, as a taxpayer, and I'm hearing the numbers, I hear the city finance manager telling us here tonight that our tax rate is lower than the other cities. And then I hear individuals who did the research and it appears that other cities, that that's not a true statement. I'm curious as to, is the Commissioners have done their own research? Or do y'all just quickly jump to go with each other's decision and just vote on something? And I do have to agree with Mr. Abundis. I was also observing here and Ms. Sepulveda, you were looking down through the papers. You've done that before, even on the other meetings that I have attended. And that's kind of rude. But I really appreciate all the Commissioners. And Frank, I've hardly ever heard you speak, so I have to say, I was quite impressed because I'm always telling you, you need to speak up. Speak up for your district, speak up for the people. And that's what we want to see. We want to see our Commissioner speak up and ask questions. And I can see, I know I spoke to one of the Commissioners today and he was saying that he needed to maybe think this again and table this and get more information before a sound decision is made. And it also appears that these decisions have been made, just have already, the money's been allocated. And yes, we all pay taxes and we don't, who wants to pay more money? I mean, everybody's on a budget right now. I can tell you that is per my district. I know earlier we were talking about the flooding and so forth. I mean, not only do the yards flood, but I actually gotten reports that the whole house floods. And then when I attended our District 1 Town Hall meeting, it was disclosed by the County Drainage Department that the city hasn't even kept up the records in like, for example, the flooding zones. They haven't have them come to up to par. So this, the last time that they even updated it was like, I think in 1972 or 1974. I mean, there's just so much work. But I really am here to say, really reconsider before making a decision. And I really don't see a lot of the Commissioners asking questions and that is very concerning to me. I don't, I mean, why have an executive meeting behind doors? Why not have it in front of the public? And I know with the school security, I mean, I don't know how many times, you know, we've had meetings. The mayor doesn't show up. I mean, you know, the monies. I really do wish that you guys would talk about the important things that the City of Harlingen needs. It's all, it was like you said, Ms. Mayor, you know, all of Harlingen, kids are Harlingen. We all are important. Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
If there's no one else here to speak, we will close the public hearing at this time.
I had a quick question, Gabe. How many budget workshops did we have?
Oh, I think we had three or four. I don't remember exactly how many.
And when we have these budget workshops, they aren't open to the public?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and, okay.
They're also televised.
Okay, they're also televised. So we have given input to the people of Harlingen about what's gonna be in the budget before we actually came and started finalizing budget, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I have a question also. The, we show what the impact at a .6, at our no need to vote, the .60 that we're gonna apply, a million plus a little bit. What would be, I didn't see what the number would be if we went to the no new tax, the .59. What would the impact on the voter rate for that?
I think it's about, I didn't bring the paperwork with me for the no new revenue rate, but I think it's about $600,000 lower.
We did have that at the previous meeting, right?
Yeah, we had it on the PowerPoint, I think. How much revenue that would generate.
No, no, that's why I asked, I couldn't remember if they showed that or not.
Do you have that, Gabe, with you by any chance?
No, ma'am, I don't. It was, and I think, I think in the three PowerPoints that we had before, the three workshops, it was in there every time.
I just didn't commit it to memory. But it's approximately 600 as opposed to the million.
Commissioner, I'd have to get that number to you. I don't have that off the top of my head.
And again, I'm just trying to get the timeline. When did we start working on the budget? Robert, do you remember?
We started the budget process with the departments in March. And we started having, I think, workshops, I believe in June.
Okay, so we've had workshops since June.
Yeah, May and June. Because then July 25th is when we got the certified total. So we had them May, June, and July.
And they have been open to the public?
Yes.
Excuse me, getting back to March, that's when we started, city started to work on the budget, correct?
Correct.
Suggestion for next year. Starting March, starting this coming March, when you have and you meet with the division, the directors, have two or three of, well, not three, have at least two of the Commissioners there. And the reason I'm asking, so we can find out right off the bat if they actually need those products that they're asking for, those items. Okay? That's something that, I know it's gonna be questioned because don't you trust the staff? But if we trust the staff the way we've been doing, that's why we're in the hole we are with our water system issues, infrastructure.
Commissioner, what I would prefer to do is that in a public meeting such as this, we bring the directors in front of you and then you can ask them directly so the entire public can see what the discussions are.
Please do.
And I think in all of our workshops, all of the directors were there at all of our workshops. They were required to be there.
Did anybody else have any other questions? I'm sorry.
No? Okay. I do want to commend the city staff for working really hard and providing information to us in as best as they can. And I do recognize that there's room for improvement and I'm sure that we can move forward in making those changes in this, in the coming year. But I do appreciate, having been here just a few months, being embraced by city staff and getting the information timely. I do appreciate that and I want everyone to know. I know it's hard. So I don't want anybody that has worked and provided information to this commission feel that we're not appreciative because we are. But I do again acknowledge that we can improve and I'm sure that we'll do that in this coming year. Thank you. Commissioner Morales, did you have any? I know I.
Yeah, I do have one. Gabe, when was the last time we had a real inventory of everything that's owned by the city? Equipment, items, cars, mileage on them, hours on everything.
We have a list that we keep, that we can provide to you that has our entire inventory.
No, I requested that and I received that. And hopefully the rest of the Commissioners got the same list. But my question is, when do we bring in the staff and actually inventory that? Make sure that some of the equipment. sure that some of the equipment, I don't mean to bring up somebody else in another city, they took off with a backhoe?
In 2019, we hired RCI to come in and do a physical inventory of our capital assets.
What was that?
In 2019, we hired RCI, a company, an external company, to come in and do an inventory of all of our capital assets.
That was, what, three years ago, right?
Yeah.
What month?
Don't remember, but it was in 2019, or, yeah, 2019 or 2020. I can get to that report.
We need to do it again.
We can do that again, Commissioner. We just need to figure out.
This goes back to being responsible, okay? Granted, the only one who's been here more than two years has been Commissioner Ms. Mark, okay? I still.
I didn't take the backup.
No, I didn't think so. At the end of the day, I'm not saying, hey, we need to be responsible without, I mean it, across the board. I think I brought it up to your attention. I've stormed into your office once or twice, asking for material, certain objects or certain material, because Dan Gammit, I see a cost savings, okay? So we can minimize how much we're spending.
And just as an FBI commissioner, every time we get rid of inventory, we bring it to the commissioners, you can say that it's surplus property, and then we auction it off. And this last auction, which we had, I think, a week and a half ago, we made over $400,000 from that inventory auction.
And last year, it was over 100 pages of inventory that went out, okay? At the end of the day, we need to be transparent, which has been brought up numerous times, and we need to be efficient, extremely efficient, okay? Are we going to have a recession? No telling. But we got to prepare for the worst, okay? I'm asking, yes, to a certain degree, I don't feel I have a choice. But we need to make sure that these big-ticket items, anything over $100,000 or $75,000, we look through it and make sure we need it. We don't want to buy a new truck when Dan Gammit, the other one, has only 60,000 miles on it. Or we want to, you know, use it for another 120,000 miles, if it's doable.
Commissioner, I agree, and we're not buying very many pieces of equipment. We are buying some. Aside from the vector truck, the next biggest purchase is for PD for patrol vehicles at over $300,000. So we are buying some, but.
Believe me, believe me when I tell you this. I don't have an issue with the PD, okay? And if I'm not mistaken, there's grants for vehicles for the PD, okay? And this is one of the things I brought up when I first came on board, okay? We need a grant writer. We got ourselves a grant writer. Are we using that grant writer to the best be? I don't think so, okay?
We just got a $5 million grant that we had to write for Commerce Streets. So we are writing our fair share of grants. We're also trying to use Hollis Rutledge to help us with anything, so every time there's a request, we send it up to him, and we have meetings with him, so.
That 5 million, believe it or not, I'm greedy. Add another zero to it, okay? The reason I asked you for lobbyists, I've been here for 15 months. Tomorrow, if I'm lucky, I will get to meet them. And I do have a little bit of a laundry list of things that I will want them to advocate for us. And by saying token, guess what? I would like to know what they've done for us in the past. I know we pay a good chunk of change to those guys, whether we split it with the school district, the EDC, it still comes out of this budget.
We can have that conversation with them tomorrow, Commissioner. I'm sure they'll be willing to.
We will, thank you.
Discuss all that.
Gabe, if I could speak as a steelworker again, do you piss away money?
No, Commissioner.
Great, thank you.
Let's try to stay on point here. Anyone else have any other questions? No? Okay, so, Mark?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Robert, did you?
No, I could just recap the revenues and expenditures, but that's basically it on the budget. And it does have to be a record vote.
This is on 17 or 18?
This is on 17.
17.
On 17, okay. So, but Mark still needs to.
Mayor, have you closed public hearing?
Yes.
Yes, you did.
We did.
So, reading the ordinance, an ordinance adopting the revenue and expenditure budget for the City of Harlingen, Texas, for the fiscal year October 1st, 2022 through September 30th, 2023, providing for the publication of the caption of this ordinance, and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Do we have a motion?
Now, we can start with a record vote.
Okay. So first, do you want to move for the first?
Move that the maintenance and operations rate be fixed at?
This is on the budget one, the 17, yeah.
Okay.
They just have to make a motion to approve the budget.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought, that's what I just asked you, and you said on this one, so I got confused.
On 17, yeah.
Okay. So do we have a motion to approve, and each one has to individually, is that what you're saying?
That's on the tax one, on 18.
Okay. Okay, so do we have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We do have to go a record vote, one by one.
You're confusing, it's here.
Yeah, the budget and the tax both have to be a record vote.
Right, that's what, okay, I did believe that that's correct. Okay, so if we can start with.
The budget, aye.
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 Reluctantly, but aye.
Aye for the decrease. Thank you.
Motion passes. Okay, let's not talk from the audience. Moving on to item number 18, public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading for the proposed adoption of the tax year 2022 ad valorem tax rate for maintenance and operation, together with the interest and sinking rate for fiscal year 2023 by a record vote. And are we moving this open to a public hearing?
Yes.
At this time, is there anyone that is here to speak for or against item number
Robert Luthwich, District Three. You know, the last discussion on the budget and the timing of the certification of the tax rule, so that you can set the rate, kind of made me think about something, because there's been allegations from certain, you know, citizens that you guys have predetermined what you're going to do at this meeting. Well, it dawned on me that you knew that you wanted the max voter approval rate of 3.5%. So your finance director already knew what his dollar amount was, and that's what you budgeted to. You budgeted to the 3.5% cap. You didn't try to work a budget to save money for the citizens of Harlingen. You took the tax rule certification, you knew what the state cap was at 3.5%. You knew what your new development was at $400,000 in taxes. And then y'all budgeted to the cap, the maximum, 3.5%. And that's what you budgeted to? You know, congratulations, y'all went through the whole budget process, and you said, here's the dollar amount we're going to shoot for. And it was the cap. It was the maximum amount of the voter approval rate, not the new, no new tax rate. It was the maximum amount of 3.5%. That's what you budgeted to. That's why y'all didn't find any reductions. That's all I've got to say.
Thank you, sir.
Antonia Sanchez, and I just want to direct it to Mr. that he was saying that there were so many meetings or trainings and all this. Is that what y'all went to get trained for, to do this kind of job?
I'm not sure if, what I meant was the workshops, is that what we do is when we're having the budget, so people can understand what's going in the budget.
Yeah, and that's exactly what you did. You got trained for that, to do this. To get the budget, to higher the taxes to get the budget. No?
I'm not understanding.
I'm not too sure what you got trained on either, because you don't show nothing that you've got trained. Thank you.
Thank you. So typically, we don't respond to during this moment, but I just want to make a clarification just for, and I appreciate that there's additional people here in the room that maybe haven't been here at other meetings. It is kind of a learning curve sometimes, so I just want to explain a little. The workshops that we have here at the City of Harlingen is not for the commission. It's a workshop where we work directly with city staff to gather the information, so that way we do our research and our homework on what is needed for the city, and it's a work in progress. And we have several workshops until, and then we finally get here today and provide that. And that information has been provided at several other workshops that the public is welcome to come at any time. And so that's what that is for. So it's nothing, no training. I know it's a, you know, kind of a term of art, I guess, workshop. We think naturally that that means that maybe it's some type of training for the commission, but it's not. It's really where we can kind of get down and speak directly with the directors of each department to see what their needs are and to work to, hopefully, you know, save the taxpayer as much money and to make sure we're not doing any wasteful spending. But thank you. Mr. Mateo.
Freddie Mateo, again, District Five. Why not increase it another percent, another tenth of a percent? Would that require you to take this to a vote, so the people can actually vote on this, like the entire city? Is that why you only did it at the cap? So that the voters wouldn't have to be heard at the ballot box? Because if that's the case, it sounds very underhanded and very misleading. If you're looking at it from the resident's side, it looks like you guys are hell-bent on getting more money regardless. Like, this deal's already done. To me, this looks like just a dog and pony show. Hey, we have to have this meeting. It's like each one of you already made up your minds. I know he has. Mr. Perez, I know you have. So what's the point of all this? If all of you already did your backdoor deals and, you know, what's the point of all this? To me, it looks like some of you up here are misleading the residents of Harlingen. Not all of you, some of you. And those of you that are on social media, be careful what you put out there. Some of you, I've seen some of your comments, and they're very elementary and condescending to the people that don't think like you, that have different opinions. It doesn't look good on you to look down on the citizens that voted for you and make them look bad on social media and bully them. I know they don't appreciate it. I don't appreciate it, and it's embarrassing as a citizen to have a leader from the city berating people on social media, because they don't agree with their agenda. So please reconsider this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Antonia Sanchez, Precinct Four, going to the mayor. Mayor, yes, this is my first time here with you, here as mayor, referring back to, some of you are new, don't know the process, no need, this and that. I want to know, how do you all advertise your meetings, your workshops, or whatever needs to be done? Because I don't follow social media. And if that's the only route y'all are taking, then I'm missing out on everything. How else do y'all get that word out to the people that don't have internet and stuff? Can anybody answer that?
Again, Ms. Sanchez, we typically don't do, and I hope people don't think that we're trying to be rude, but we don't normally do this interaction, but I think it's important, so I hope, you know, I get a little grace from the commission, because we typically don't do this. But we do, can you go through?
Absolutely.
There are several routes, and social media isn't the primary. Can you?
We do have, of course, we advertise on the website, but if you don't have access to the internet, then you can't view it there. We do put, this particular meeting was advertised by law in the newspaper, so we do that. And then we publish all our meetings out in front, we post an agenda in front of Town Hall, so if you want to just come up to the bulletin board that's outside, you can actually see the content of the meetings and when we're going to have them. And again, we also use Facebook as a publication for some of our meetings, but if you don't have access to the internet, you wouldn't have access to that. But we do post them up here in front of City Hall, and this particular one was posted in the newspaper.
Okay. Well, I just have a recommendation for all of you. Maybe a mail-out could be one of those things that can reach out to citizens of Harlingen. Thank you.
Thank you.
That would just be really expensive.
Right. I mean, that would be wonderful, but it was a big expense on postage alone, and I know that there's not, I don't believe, and I could be wrong, but I don't believe there's any other municipality that does that. We follow the rules, the Toma rules, and post, and I know Amanda does a wonderful job. And sometimes, ladies and gentlemen, you don't know this, but sometimes Amanda will leave here at 8:30 or 9 o'clock at night, and I've walked with her, and some of these commissioners have walked with her out as well, getting everything ready and making sure it's posted timely. So we appreciate all that you do, and again, all the city staff that makes this work. Unfortunately, Commissioner Lopez decided to take a small break, and I think that we need him to move forward. Is there anyone else that would like to speak for or against? Okay, we will close the public hearing at this time, and do you have something you're going to?
No, I just came up here to record the vote.
Okay. And do we need Mark to wait for Commissioner to, for you to read the caption, or can?
If he's coming back, we can.
Okay, so it'll be just, sorry, ladies and gentlemen, just one minute.
An ordinance of the City of Harlingen, Texas, levying ad valorem taxes for use in support of the municipal government of the city for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2022, and terminating September 30th, 2023, providing for appropriating each levy for specific purposes, providing when taxes shall become due, and when same shall become delinquent if not paid, providing for publication and an effective date, and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Do we have a motion?
Before making the motion, Commissioner Morales, I know you've been working very closely with the staff, with the budget. Were you able to cut any fat?
I didn't go that far.
So, no. Okay. Gabe, is there any way we can cut any fat on this budget?
We could not, we could, what we could do is just, that list I showed you, upcoming expenditures, that's the only thing we could cut. You'd have to figure out what part of that you want to cut. Now, there's certain things you can't, you can't, you can't remove. For instance, the electricity charge, the health insurance charge, the police and fire, because that's through an agreement through CBA.
So in essence, if we were to cut this, we'd have to defund the police and the fire department. We'd have to pay our hard-working employees a lot less money. The positions that we need for the building inspectors, so that we can add more development, we'd have to cut that. The new equipment, like the vector truck, we would have to cut that, but that, again, would not improve our drainage, because that's what that is. It's supposed to suck up the, you know, the stuff from the, what are they called? The inlets, in order to, you know, improve the drainage. Health insurance, we can't really cut that, because that's out of our bounds.
That's already been cut.
Electricity, everybody knows the electricity costs have gone up, so we can't really cut that. Humane society, in order for us to cut the humane society, that means we'd have to take away $113,000, and we'd have to have more of these, more of our, you know, furry friends out there on the streets, you know, getting run over or other things happening to our pets. And fuel costs, well, that's nothing we can do. So, like you said earlier, all these are essentials, correct?
Those are not wants, those are needs.
Okay. Just wanted to, just to reiterate that, because I have a feeling, or I get a sense that people think that by doing this, we're just like splurging money and spending money. These are needs. All these services that the city provides, unfortunately, they do. All these services that the city provides, unfortunately, they do cost money. And like our police and fire, I mean, these are some of the most important individuals that we have in the city. I would wonder if anybody would, here would be okay with cutting their salary. I sure don't. I think they're underpaid, to be honest. I think they should get more. But it's just, these things, unfortunately, they do cost money, and overall, you know what I mean? This is what's necessary when you run a city. This is what's necessary.
If I may real quick, before we take a vote, I just want to bounce off what Commissioner Perez said. And I hear what Mr. Lefwitch talked about previous years and the tax hikes that were incurred as a result of that. You know, I've been here two and a half, a little over, almost two and a half months in the position, so I wasn't privy to some of the workshops that took place on the budget creation and so on. However, I've looked at it in depth. I mean, I had them print out the entire eight-pound book and looked at line by line how much bullets, how much everything costs. There's no fat there. And anything that comes off that, we're not gaining anything prior to me taking the vote. That's my opinion. It's not popular. I don't like paying taxes any more than anyone else. I don't like when my house gets appraised and the value goes up. All the things, we're all dealing with the same thing. I think, though, we are committed, and Commissioner Morales, I think stated it, we're going to look at this a whole lot closer from here on out. You have a lot, you have new people here. I think, I speak for them when I say we're committed to making this better.
And another thing I would like to point out is that each and every single one of us, in order to be a commissioner, we have to live in Harlingen. And I own a house, and I know Norma owns a house, Mike owns a house, I know Ford owns a house. Daniel, Daniel owns a house, and all of us basically own houses. So is, you know, do taxes affect us? Yes, they do. I'm a teacher, okay? I'm not a millionaire that's all like, oh, taxes, no, they affect me too. They do, I do have children that I have to, you know, pay for college. I do have children that have to feed and, you know, buy clothing and stuff. So do, do I like taxes? No, I don't. But I understand that these are necessities. This is not money that we're just getting and just, you know, just throwing out there. No, these are things, our police, our fire, to improve drainage, to improve the streets. We, each and every single one of us has had a town hall meeting. And these town hall meetings, we have them because we want to hear from the people. And some, and what the people tell us is that, hey, we need better streets, we need speed humps, we need better drainage, we need, you know, more, you know, more policing by the, more patrolling by the police. All those things, I agree, we need that. But unfortunately, all those things cost money. They cost money. We can't, you know, improve the drainage without having money. We cannot do any of that stuff without money, and this is the essentials. And again, overall, it is a decrease in the tax rate. It is. So in other words, you're not, are you having to pay taxes? Yes, everybody pays taxes. That's like, what's the saying? Death and taxes, the only two certainties. Unfortunately, yes, people are paying taxes. Less and less, but taxes.
So to make a couple of points, we are in a recession, Frank. And inflation, inflation at 9%, you become half, you're worth half as much money in eight years. Your buying power falls in eight years by 50%. So you all affect it when you go to the grocery store or anything else. It affects the city too. And Gabe, in the previous, Aliyah, previous administrations, to be a steelworker, again, we've not pissed away any money. We've run a tight ship, and we have trimmed and trimmed and trimmed. Department heads want this and that, and this and that. And in the magical world, it would be beautiful to give them all that. But we don't live in a magical world. We have to balance the budget every year, and we need a cushion in the general fund for when disasters strike. And then we have bond obligations, et cetera, et cetera. And so we are lowering your taxes 1.3 cents, a half a million dollars collectively.
And just to piggyback a little bit on that, I can, you know, tell you that this isn't something that we just decided on before, at the previous meeting. This was months in the works. And Gabe, here, our city manager, has the position that probably nobody, nobody wants in that everyone, and Robert too, they go to them and ask them, this is our wish list. And he's the guy, not as, you know, initially, that says, we just can't do it. This is not, we don't have, we don't have that, we don't have the money in the budget. And it's trimmed already before it even gets to us. And then we trim it even more. So it is a work in progress. City staff works on this for a very long time to try to present to us the most lean budget possible with the monies that we have to spend, and then we do our best to even trim it more. And that's what we've done. And, you know, we all here, as a commission, I would imagine, I can say, wish that we had, we had the opportunity to even trim it more so, but there are certain things that we just can't, and that's what you're seeing there. And I know that I am committed personally, and I know I've spoken with some of the commissioners here on this board, if not probably all at one point or another, and we want the City of Harlingen to grow. We hope to have more sales tax revenue, so that way we don't have to rely heavily on property taxes. We want to make sure that we're growing in our industrial park, that we're providing good-paying jobs, so that way individuals, you know, when there's this inflation that we have no control over, you have a better-paying job, so that way it doesn't hurt as much. We are committed to providing a better quality of life here in the City of Harlingen, and we hope that at the next year, when at least I've been here a full year, and Commissioner Lopez, and Commissioner Kinsley, and these guys over here, even though they've been here longer than I, hopefully, at the next time around, we have better news and we can reduce that rate even further. That is our goal. That is what we want to do, and that's what we're committed to do, and we're going to work on that every single day until we come here again the next year. And hopefully, everyone is here and can see that progress. We're just asking, you know, to give us that opportunity. This is the first time, you have a new commission. Let's see what we can do together. And I am available to talk, and Amanda will tell you that I take appointments at City Hall. It's not difficult. You call her and set up an appointment to talk to me. I do talk to people on social media. I would never berate or say anything negative. Everything I post is positive and encouraging and never go down any kind of rabbit hole with anyone because we can have a conversation face-to-face and not on social media. And that's what I believe. And so I am, you know, committed to being transparent. We have had multiple town halls, we've had listening sessions in each district. So we are out there, and we are available to you. So all you need to do is make contact. Everybody's number's published. You're able to text us, call us. We do all have jobs, so we might not be able to respond immediately, but we will get to respond to you. So I hope that you give us this opportunity, and we can grow together. So having said that, anyone else?
And if I may say one more thing, for those who criticize me for leading a prayer life, I offer you Matanya and Theosis if you're interested.
Getting back to the new equipment, the 1.1 million that we're going to purchase, keep in mind, I'm asking to slow it down. And if we do come across some good savings, okay? And if we do implement, or I come up with something else that can reduce how much the city is paying out, is it possible to do a tax rebate to the citizens?
I'm not sure I understand what you mean by a tax rebate.
By refund checks, that's what you're saying.
Yes.
No, I don't, that's not something.
That's not possible.
But I will tell you, Commissioner, that based on the past experience, we may have to slow this down anyway because some of these vehicles that we want may not be available. In the past, we, Public Works has tried to order three trucks that were only given one to purchase, so two never got purchased. So that was a savings to the enterprise fund at Public Works. PD is asking for five units, five patrol Tahuhs, at 378,000. They may not get those because they may not be available. So.
Believe me when I tell you, when it comes to the PD, that's a given. And I brought it up earlier. There's grants for that if we really work at it. And they can get a lot of the equipment if we use those grants. Might be a little bit of a matching, okay? But this is something that we can get our lobbyists on to make sure they get this.
And then the other big purchases, obviously, the vector truck at half a million dollars, so that's one of the biggest.
So we're looking at basically the vector truck at half a million and 600,000 on vehicles, in vehicles.
Almost 400,000 for PD. That's 900,000 right there. So the rest is under 100,000. And the other, the largest other item is a CBA fuel station for the fire department, an air compressor, to fill their tanks that they use when they go inside a burning building. 75,000 for that. And that's what I, what I said, these are needs, not wants. I mean, that's really, I really meant that.
I, Mayor, with all that said, we can't cut any of these costs, and reluctantly, we have to go with this rate to cover our budget. I move that the maintenance and operation rate be fixed at 0.512729 for $100.
Do we have a second?
Second.
And we'll need a vote on each one individually. So Commissioner Kinsley?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is it me?
If you've been holding out, Frank, this is the time.
I'll go with no since I'm being challenged.
Aye to the decrease.
And I move that the interest and sinking tax rate be fixed at 0.093628 for $100.
Yeah. Should they vote before they go to the next one?
Yeah, I think you should vote on that M and O and then move to the next one. They did?
That's what we did.
They just voted.
They all voted. And it was, it was an aye by all except for Commissioner Morales. And so that passes.
Okay.
And this, moving on, sorry, Commissioner Lopez?
Move that the interest and sinking tax rate be fixed at 0.093628 for $100. Aye.
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 All by all, and so that motion passes. Moving on.
I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of 0.606357 for $100, which is effectively a 1.681% increase in the tax rate.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Since I voted no, I've got to stick with no.
Aye to the decrease.
Mark, I have a question. When Commissioner made the motion, there was no second? Do we have to go back and, does that matter, or?
No, because they're, each one, each one of them is giving their individual, I think, vote right.
We had a motion, but no second. Does that matter?
We should, we should revote with a second.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Can you do that again, Commissioner Kinsley? Vote.
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Aye to the decrease.
And Mayor, we had no second for item number two either.
We did on one, not on two.
Not on two, that's correct.
And, okay, so do we have a second on number three?
Aye, second.
Okay, and if we can just, one more time.
Aye.
Aye. This is for the debt service?
Yes, sir.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so do we capture all of those, Robert?
Yes.
Okay, so everyone here was in favor of that. Okay, so after, the second and final vote will take place on the proposed tax rate on Wednesday, September 21st, 2022, at the regular city commission meeting, which will be held here at the town hall at 5:30 PM here at 118 East Tyler, Harlingen.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And with that, we are going to take a short, two-minute recess, so that way we can do a few things, and I will be right back. Do we, I don't have to get a motion for that, or?
I don't think so.
Okay, thank you all for indulging me in that small break. The time is now 8:25, and we are going to continue on with our new business. And so item number four, consideration and possible action to renew the contractual agreement between the City of Harlingen and Elizabeth Rose Flotis to provide water aerobics classes at Pendleton Park Pool for the term of one year, beginning from October 1, 2022, to September 2023. Mr. Mendez?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, City Commission. For the record, I'm Javier Mendez, Parks and Rec Director. This agenda item is a renewal for the water aerobics, and they conduct business at Pendleton Pool three days a week from, for one hour, 9:00 to 10:00 AM. With this renewal, we shared the, some changes with the contractor, Mr. Rose Flotis. And so in your packet, there's a contract with a lot of highlighted areas. And what that is, is we wanted to make the contract uniform, the same one that we have for the tennis center, the same one we have for Harlingen Aquatics Team. And so we wanted to make hers similar or identical. Some of the changes that she's asked for, well, let me share with you what we had asked for. We wanted to take lanes one and two and to open up that for public lap swim. And so she didn't want us to do that. She wants to keep the entire pool for that one hour. She also has asked if we could reduce her monthly fee. She didn't say how much, but she just asked if we would consider that. And as part of that, and some inquiries, we've came up with a, with a cost analysis of what our expenses are and what we collect, and that's the slide that's up on, up on the screen. And so what that is, is we figured out, for water aerobics, she's in the pool for 12 hours a month. Our cost for, to operate the pool per hour is $44.17 for a total of $530.04 for water aerobics. And so if you see up on top, on the right-hand side, is if we were to increase, or actually, we were to keep it the same, of course, that's $200, equal to $530. So I guess the question is, is do we keep it at 200, or do we consider increasing the fee for the water aerobics?
What is your recommendation?
Well, I mean, I think we ought to keep it the same. I mean, I know that she is using the pool as a business. We are losing money, but of course, we lose money with the general public as well, people that go in and lap swim or for learn-to-swim classes.
I would like to say, though, that swimming pools are generally money losers for cities. I don't know of a city that's actually generated revenue out of a swimming pool and actually had a profit. The other thing to consider is that she does provide a service to the elderly population. A lot of them use it as therapeutic. And so I think that if we were to try to do that ourselves, we probably couldn't do it for what she's doing. And so I agree with Javier that we ought to leave the rate at $200.
Yes, I agree too. And I know that I've spoken with several people that attend the class, and I know that I've learned something as your new mayor here, that this aerobics class has been going on for more than half of my life. So that's impressive, and so kudos to all of the people that attend. I think it's, you know, 30, 30 years or so, and so I guess since I was 15 years old, or I just had a birthday, so since I was, I don't even know how old I am anymore. But for a very long time, and And so even though it is, it is at a cost to the city, I think for right now, it would cause some disruption to make any, any changes. So I think that your recommendation is, is what this commission should, should adopt so that she can continue to provide that service to the elderly that do see it as, as therapy. And, and, and also a, a form of community, right? They meet every, that hour. And so I don't know if anyone else has anything else?
No, I, I'm like Norma. I, I went and I visited with, to the pool. And I met a lot of the, our, our, you know, senior citizens that, you know, that partake in the aerobics. And they're very enthusiastic about it. So I think it's a good thing. The only thing is, I didn't understand was that she wants to take the whole pool and not leave anything to the public?
Correct. And so we, we generally don't see a lot of traffic at that time of the day from 9:00 to 10:00 AM. We do see it, of course, early in the morning, before 7:00 AM. And we do see a lot of it in the afternoons.
So from 9:00 to 10:00, they're good?
Right.
Okay, I'm good with it.
Are we allowed to ask any questions about this?
There's no public hearing on, on this, but did you have a question?
Because I do want to speak, Brenda Pinheiro, District. Brenda Pinheiro, District 3, and I am one of the constituents who goes to the pool. And I'm not able to use it at certain times because there are either not enough lanes available. And that's just the time when I am available to go. And I think that, you know, health, it's a really important aspect of our community. It ties into indicators of success for our city. And I'm just curious as to why the pool needs to be used entirely. I do support the program, but I do wonder if the amount of people who use the program do in fact need to use the entire pool? Or if at least one lane can be available for the people who can only go at that time? Just out of curiosity.
Lap, the lap lanes?
Right, right. So, so I don't know how big is, I've, I've seen the group, the group is big. And I've been told you can't just use the pool. So graciously, of course, I leave, I, I value the program and I fully support it. But I'm just wondering, volume wise, is the group big enough that they truly need the entire pool? Can we leave at least one lane available for just the community?
What was your, what was your name, ma'am?
Brenda Pinheiro.
Yeah, okay. And I just kind of want to make a note, and I know someone mentioned earlier that I'm always looking down. But I, I try my very best to write everyone's name down that, that, that come in and speak so that I can remember the next time that, that you're here. And I'm taking notes. So I don't mean to be disrespectful to anyone, but it's hard for me not, you know, to do. I'm trying, but that's normally what I'm doing when I'm looking down. But thank you. That's an excellent point. Is there a way to have maybe one or two lanes open? The pool is huge.
Right.
The far, the far, the lanes, or is, when you said the whole pool, that's the?
Well, it's all the shallow, the shallow area. So what they do is the shallow area runs, when you, when you walk into the pool, right? It runs straight, right? So then the deeper end is on the right side. And so what they do is they've explained to me is that when they do the water aerobics, they have to have the water to a certain height right at their body in order to get full movement of muscles and so on. And so there are some individuals that are taller than others. And so they go to the back end of the pool, which is lanes one and two. But one thing I wanted to point out, Mayor, is the way I worded it was that the city would use lanes one and two, which would be made available to the general public for lap swim. In the event that the city is not using swim lanes one and two at Pendleton Pool at full capacity during the agreed upon accessible time, water aerobics would be able to use all unused lanes for the purpose permitted.
So if people came in during a class, they wanted to lap swim, they would adjust.
Correct.
And make those lanes available. And then once they finish, they could expand again.
Right.
Seems very reasonable to me.
And so we've done that. The same thing with the other contractor at, well, at Pendleton and at Victor Pool.
Okay.
Does that young lady that spoke earlier, does that sound good to you?
Yes, Commissioner. And I do want to point, and thank you, City Manager, for, for sharing that pools are never a source of revenue. But I do want to point out that I have not seen a consistent effort in charging the dollar. So I, I, when I went to the pool, you know, I, I went to meet my responsibility. And I'm like, who do I give the dollar to? And I know that it's just $1, right? But I think it's a matter of principle and integrity that this is a place that we all enjoy, as cities, citizens of this city. And it just, you know, we need to live by a temple. So maybe something, we're, we're not gonna get revenue from a dollar, but at the very least, we're instilling in people's mind that we are good stewards of the resources that we have and that we have to meet our responsibility to pay for it.
And Javier will make sure that that happens from here on forward. So, and is Ms. Flotis okay with this agreement?
Yes, so we, we did share it with her and she just, she just asked if we could remove that section. But I told her that I would bring it to you all. We did also take this to the park advisory board, the way it is right now, with taking in lanes one and two. And the, and the, the board did approve it as is, so.
Okay.
Or not approve, they recommended approval.
Recommended approval.
Can I make a point? Technical.
I'm sorry, sir?
Can I make a technical point on this issue? You say the whole pool like it's the whole thing. When really you can't do raw water in the deep. So that's one half of the whole that's not good. It's, it's over our heads. Can't do it that way.
Okay.
When you say just take two lanes, you're taking a part of the pool we use. You can't do the real shallow part, you can't do the deep part. Now, if they want to swim laps only in the deep part, hey, cool. That works.
Is, is that, I'm, and again, this is so, is not something that we should be doing. So I don't want to, 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 you know, set this precedent. So, but since I, I, I want to kind of give you a forge. And I know, I think we've spoken before. I can't tell with the mask, right? But I think so. And so Javier, is, can, can they be the, the lanes as the, in, in the deep end? Where they can have those two?
Well, the lane goes from deep to shallow or to.
That's what I understood, but that's not what I'm hearing.
But every, every lane, I was like, okay, okay, I think I.
I think I understand what you're saying. Every lane goes from left, like from south to north, from deep to shallow. Therefore, that's why you need to stay in the center. And I, I just wanted to ask for clarification. And I think the program should continue. And if it does sound that they truly need that space. So I'm more than happy to work around my schedule. I, I just wanted to be clear as to why they needed the entire pool. And I fully support it, so.
Thank you, Ms. Brenda.
We don't need to change it. And I appreciate your grace in entertaining my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. So is there other people that come during this time? Other than Ms. Brenda, that is in amazing shape. I'm sorry, I just have to say that. I need to get out to the pool and, and, and go with you.
You do yoga on Saturdays, anybody who wants to?
Yes, you provide that information to Amanda there. And I know there's others. I won't mention who, but there's some yoga fans on the, on the commission.
Commissioner, she looked right at you when you said that.
It helps with my back, just to be very clear. I do do yoga. It helps with my back, so, thank you, Mayor.
I do. So is, is there other people that come at that time? Is it, I mean, I think that the way that it's read, it reads is that on the off chance that someone comes, that they would be afforded the opportunity. Because they may not be here, in all fairness, at this meeting, and they might want to, to use the pool. But for the most part, kids are at school from 9:00 to 10:00, so they should have full access to the pool. And if things change, you know, please just bring it to my attention and see if we can do something about it if, if, if we need to at a later point. But based on what we've heard, do we have a, a motion to approve?
I move to approve this item four with the dollar amount that I'm yet suggesting.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose? Motion passes. Thank you. And item number five, consideration and possible action to renew the contractual agreement between the City of Harlingen and John M. Tucker to use Pendleton Park and Victor Park Pools to operate a youth swim program. Javier?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, City Commission again. My name is Javier Mendez. I'm the Parks and Rec Director. This item here is a, is also a renewal for the Harlingen Aquatics Team. And so they operate out of Pendleton Pool and at Victor Pool. And so depending on the time of the year, Hat will use Pendleton Pool, which is generally from August through May. And then they'll, they'll use Victor Pool during the summers, which is May through August. And so in his agreement as well, we have lanes one and two. And in, it has the same language. In the, in the event that there's nobody using it, it would revert back to, for Hat to use. His hours that he uses the pool is from 5:00 to 7:00, Monday to Friday, during, at Pendleton. And then at Victor Pool during the summer, he uses lanes one through eight from 6:30 AM to 10:00 AM. And again, we take a portion of that pool for our learn to swim programs for the summer. We take lanes one, two, three, and four, which is the shallow area. Again, he pays $200 a month. And again, we did the cost analysis for him as well, just to be fair. So he's in the pool at, at Pendleton 40 hours per month, times $44.17. That comes out to 1,766, 1,776.80. And then during the summer, he's in there 70 hours per month, times the $44.17 per hour. It comes out to 3,091. So he has, same thing, you know, the, the contract has, has been the same year after year. He has asked for some other, for additional hours. He asked to add one hour Monday through Thursday for his junior team from 4:00 to 5:00. And he also asked if he can use Victor Pool for, to host swim meets during, on Saturdays. He, he wants to try to bring six meets to the city for up to four hours. So those would be additional hours that we would have to add to the contract.
Is there any discussion?
And he's only paying 200 bucks a month, too?
Yes, sir.
But we're, I mean.
So, so what we did was we compared if we left water aerobics the same at $200. $200, the difference between 200 and the 5:30, it's about 37.73%. So we, if we factor that into the 1,776, that's $670.38 for Pendleton. And then during the summer, that would calculate to 1,166 if we use that same formula.
And he wants to increase the hours. So that means, obviously, if he's, I'm assuming if he increases the hours and he has these swim meets, it's going to bring him more revenue, correct?
It would bring indirect and indirect, right? So he wouldn't be paying us necessarily more money for the meets, but they would bring people from out of town to these meets.
I like, I like the fact more people are coming out of town, but I don't know. What do you guys think?
What do you recommend?
And so, I'm sorry, John Tucker, Coach Tucker's in the audience in case you, you have any questions for him. I'm sorry, Mr. Lopez.
What do you recommend?
Well, I mean, he does have more hours in the pool. I mean, I think that maybe we ought to consider raising it a little bit. But I just, I just came up with that formula, just, you know.
And I think we did that because there was, there was a complaint from the water aerobic instructor saying that the contract wasn't equitable. And she's right, it's not equitable. So I think that we probably have to increase his rate. But to what amount, that's, that's the question. I don't think we should charge him the 670 or the 1,100. I don't think he'd afford to pay that.
Okay, so what do you want us to do? You, on your recommendation, we'll pass this? And then you two will negotiate or assistant city managers? Or do you want to give us a number right here, right now?
I, I would say we, at a minimum, we have to double it.
Is that also your recommendation, Javier?
Yes, ma'am.
And that would be equitable to the water instructor?
No, it still wouldn't be equitable.
It'd still, it'd be close, because equitable, if he'd be, if he would pay 670.
Oh, that, okay.
Yeah. And then the other for, for Victor, it'd be 1,166.
I think we also have to remember the service that they're providing to the kids.
Yes.
So we don't, I don't, you know, I'm all for equitable contract. But in reality, we're not making any money on this. The 2,000, you know, at the end of the, at the end of the year is, as we all have seen, doesn't really contribute to, to much on, on the grand scheme of things. So I would not want, I mean, of course, the commission can do what it wants, but to raise it significantly to, you know, say $600 or something like that, because that's not something that he's budgeted for. And we want to make sure these kids have a place to, to go. So I think it's, and the, and the meets, the indirect impact is, is, is real. So if you are going to make some, I think what you said doubling is, seems reasonable. But anything more than that, I think might, might, the problem, the program might suffer.
And this is also contributing to the overall health of citizens. And healthy citizens, better citizens, happier citizens.
Which we've heard from Commissioner Morales talk about, our healthy, you know, the individuals that are healthy, then they're spending less money on health and going to the doctor. And we can go on and on and on. So we want to be, we want to be as fair as we can.
Right. And so that's one of the things that we don't want to do is we don't want to make a decision and then have his, his, his program fail. You know, there is other benefits as well. You know, the kids that compete, they, you know, get scholarships and so on. They, so, you know, I agree, it is a good, good program for, for the city.
So name a number, please.
Double.
He did. He said 400, but then they went going up. And so I wanted to kind of.
I think, yeah, I don't think we should go above 400.
Okay. Can we ask John Tucker a question? Is it, is that okay with you?
No.
You want to come to the, to the mic so we can hear you?
I'm John Tucker. I'm the Harlingen Aquatics Swim Team Coach. I've been coaching for 28 years. And up until, I don't know, how many years ago did we go to 200? Not too long ago, considering 28 years. Until then, we were paying a dollar a year, just like all the Pee Wee League footballs and everything else. And I've been around pools since I was this tall. They never make money. They're a hole in the ground, like a boat's a hole in the water. But that being said, if you look at the numbers, I had three kids in the water yesterday. I'm still trying to rebuild after the pandemic. I had at most two or three kids in the water. Not this past summer, but the previous summer when we got back in, in the middle of the summer after the pandemic. I didn't pay myself for about eight months, okay? Because I do it for other reasons, all right? Because I love doing it, I love working with kids. I grew up swimming, went to high school and college swimming. It's my chance to give back. So I'm fortunate enough to have social security that pays most of my bills. So that being said, at $400 a month with five kids in the water, I charge about 60 bucks, 60 bucks a month for each one of those kids. You can, you can do the math. And if you're looking at equitable numbers here, you have to take into account that Ms. Flotis has 50 or 60 people in the water. I got five at the most right now. I'm still trying to, you know, build my numbers back up. So that's kind of where I'm coming from. The $400 a month, it'll kill the program. And right now, so, I mean, I understand dollars and cents. I was a general contractor for 30 years. It doesn't grow on trees. And I've been blessed to be coaching this team for 28 years. And it has definitely been a blessing for me. But, I mean, I understand where you are, but it'll definitely shut us down. If I had 30 or 40 kids in the water, I wouldn't even be telling any of this. We just don't have the numbers.
So then why are you asking for the more hours?
But previous to the pandemic. But pre, previous to the pandemic, I had six to seven thirty in the morning, and four to five in the afternoon, and five to seven in the evening, and some Saturdays, uh, one Saturday a month, basically. And I grew up swimming on this team. As a kid, I started swimming on what was then called, uh, the Harland's HST, Harland's Swim Team. It's the same team, just morphed to HAT at this point. The reason I'm telling you that little bit of history is, that team was a championship team. We competed on a statewide basis, and we were competitive on a statewide basis. Our high school club, which was a direct, uh, result of that, that club at that time, um, was competitive in the top eight in high school swimming, because we had a coach that had us in the water four hours a day and Saturdays, uh, before UIL got into the mix and changed that for most programs in small cities in, in America, or Texas. Uh, so I know what it takes to be a championship club. That's where I'm going. And it doesn't happen on forty-five minutes a day, which is what I'm in the water at MMA as well. Uh, but I'm getting that, there's other reasons I'm doing that. So, uh, if you want to present a championship team to a kid that has their eyes on Michael Phelps or Katie Ledecky or someone at that level, you don't do it with an hour a day. Ain't going to happen ever. And so those people are swimming, Michael Phelps, when he was training for that eight gold medals, he was in the, swimming fifty or sixty thousand meters a day. That's five hours, at least, for him. And so that's kind of where I'm coming from. The program I had previous to the pandemic, early in the morning, uh, four to, four to five and five to seven and some Saturdays, it took me a long time to get there. I didn't get all that at once. I was on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board as a member and a chairman for, for several years. And so I understand how it works on the inside and the outside and how we work together. And so, uh, if I come up and said, yeah, I need six thirty, you know, this, this, and this, and this, and this, in one meeting, I'd gotten shot down. But over a period of time, I got enough hours in the water that it was a championship program. It was available to the kids who wanted to put that time in and to work towards achieving excellence. And that's what it is, it's about the pursuit of excellence. So when you ask me, uh, what it's really going to do, it's going to create a failure opportunity. And so if you don't have the opportunity to give to kids, they don't have the opportunity to excel. And I know all you guys have had kids or have kids now. So do you want me to coach your kids for failure? That's the question, you know?
Javier?
So.
Can you live with the same rate?
I can live with the same rate.
I'm asking Javier here.
Thank you, thank you, Coach Tucker.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, we, I mean, it, it's just a, a matter of, um, trying to make things equal for everyone.
What, what I would, if we're going to leave the rate the same, then I would suggest that we take the water aerobics and drop it to a hundred dollars.
Or instead of going up to four hundred, we can go to three hundred, and that's another option as well. Because I, I, I think it has to be equitable. And I, I don't, I, when it boils down to it, I appreciate what you're doing, and I know, you know, the kids need this, and I, but I also know they also get some of the stuff from the school district as well, because I work there. Um, but at the same time, I think that, um, ultimately, it is a business. And again, I don't, I don't, if we raise it just a little bit, I don't, and, I mean, you said you've had this for, how many years have you been paying the two hundred?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty?
I paid the two hundred for maybe five or six years.
Okay, so I, I think we should, I don't think we should lower it, I think we should raise it. Not by a lot, if you don't want to do the double, that's fine with me, but I, I mean, I think we should raise it at least a little bit. But that's my opinion.
I would challenge, I would challenge the view that it's a business, because we live like, just like a forty-five minute drive from the ocean. And, um, if, if this is a program that helps instill the importance of health and discipline and excellence in our kids, I don't think we should increase it. And I've seen Coach's, uh, work, I, I've never spoken with him, but when I go and I train for my triathlons, I see the passion that he puts there. And, and the kids following his instructions, and, you know, that, that builds future leaders and responsible citizens. I like your idea of decreasing it to the other program, to make it equitable, rather than increasing it on one side.
Can I reiterate one point?
Yes.
We're the program that doesn't have, we're the program that doesn't have the numbers, and you're raising our rate. I mean, seriously, I have five kids on the team right now.
How many students are, is it students or kids? How many do you have in total in, in, that you, uh, coach?
There's probably maybe eight, seven or eight.
In total? So you're just having the same kids?
Some kids are.
More hours?
What, uh, uh, I don't know all the names here, Mr. Pettis, Mr. Pettis. Um, what he's talking about, the, the school district started a, this is a USA club team, the one that I coach. USA swimming is, is the Olympic effort, that's where they go. Uh, clubs all over the United States, there's probably over four hundred thousand swimmers in USA swimming across the United States. So, um, there's been times when we ran, uh, I mean, this is back when it was, we were paying a dollar a year. We had, uh, thirty-five or forty kids on the team on a regular basis all year long. In the summertime, we had sixty-five to eighty in the, in the older group, in the more, uh, more proficient group. And we'd run two hundred and twenty-two kids through our lesson program during the summer. That's been gone a long time. The school district, uh, started a USA club team as well when they opened their pool, and we immediately, it took, it probably took seventy to seventy-five percent of our numbers, uh, away. So we've been struggling for a while. And, um, but, um, you know, it's, we, we don't have the numbers. Uh, if you want to leave it at four hundred, I can, I can call the parents to buy.
So, so you have, um, just, I, I was trying to figure it out in my phone. You said sixty-five dollars a month, you've got eight.
We can start at sixty dollars a month.
Sixty dollars a month, and you've got eight.
And right now, I have babies, five or six kids.
Okay.
That come in and out, they're not all there at the same time.
So you get, um, for all this that you do, you pay, you get about three hundred and sixty dollars a month, and so if the city of Harlingen charges you four hundred, then you're, you, we, you're not, I mean, right? That's the math, is that correct?
That's the math.
Okay, so just so that the commission is, is under, understanding?
So if you do that, okay, then, I mean, I'm, I'm a big boy. I choose not to pay myself, so I can keep the team alive.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so, and I'll go get another job, you know, I, I've been there. And so, uh, but we're talking about equitable across the board here. If we're going to get raised, and I've only got five kids in the water, and Water Aerobics has got fifty or sixty in the water, that's where you need to raise your money. Sorry, guys. It's a, it's a great program. I'm just talking about business here. I got all good things to say about, you know, all the programs that the city offers, uh, but that's, that's the way it is.
I'd, I'd be okay with, keep with that, your suggestion, because anyways, the contract's only for one year, and hopefully, within that one year, you said you can get that, um, that business back, um, that you're saying that you want to get. If you get that business back, though, next year, and it's more than five or six kids, then I would, I would definitely think that there would have to be an increase, especially with the extra hours. But I'm fine if you guys want to do that for now, because let him get his business back. He's still struggling, go for it.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion to accept the contract at the old rate.
I second that.
Any other discussion? Okay.
Javier?
Yes.
Right here.
Yes.
The only thing I would want is make sure those pools stay open, and we don't go through what we went through a couple of months ago. That's my number one concern. Everything else, I'm cool with that.
Okay, good.
Well, Coach Tucker, we wish you, um, tremendous success, and hopefully, next year, you're, you're okay with, you know, some type of rate increase, because you've just got a lot of kids in, in the water, and that's what we want. We want a, a healthy community. If we can help with that, then I, I'm glad that we're able to do that. So we had a second, um, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. And item number six, consideration impossible action to authorize a city manager to execute a contract with Alamo One Facility Services, utilizing the inter-local purchasing system program to construct the restroom facility at Lozano Plaza.
Yes, Mayor, uh, City Commissioner, again, my name is Javier Mendez, I'm the Parks and Rec Director. Um, we, um, had put this on just to kind of, uh, present it to y'all, but I don't think we are ready to move forward with spending that much money on, um, on the restroom. And so what we want to do is to, to go back to the drawing board and kind of come up with some alternatives, um, and then to come back to you later, uh, with some suggestions or recommendations. Um, so if we can reject this one, um, uh, we'll, we'll bring it back to y'all.
Yeah, and so this is one of the things I, that, um, I was talking to Gabe about, and I saw the number, and I can remember it being a citizen and not the mayor, and sitting out here and, and listening to the number of how much money it was going to be on those, um, restrooms. And I was shocked. And so now I have the opportunity to save money and say, no, we're not going to do those, that, you know, crazy number. So one of the things that I, I'd like for you to, to look, and, and I don't know if this is possible, but we have, uh, TSTC, and I don't know if it's something that the program, they have a construction program, maybe we can partner with them, and those students can help build, um, that restroom and save the city money. And it's also a project for the, for the community college, and see if that's something that's, that's possible. Um, or however else that we can save money. I understand inflation, but even at that point, I think that, that you can get a house for the, for the price of those restrooms that were.
Mayor, and I think we're also going to look at portable, uh, bathrooms.
Right, and that was something that they thought could be an alternative, right?
Yes, that's true.
And the restrooms, I think, are great, I, the ones that.
Portable ones, yes. We use, we use them often.
Yes, okay, so then, um, do we need to, we just table this, or?
Motion to reject.
Motion to reject?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I second that.
Okay, all those in favor of rejecting item number six?
Aye.
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 Pose, okay, motion carries. Thank you, Javier. Item number seven, consideration impossible action to approve a resolution accepting the Valley International Airport's proposed twenty twenty-three budget. And we're going to be very quick, right, Marv?
Yes, we will, Mayor. Uh, good evening, Mayor, uh, City Commissioners. Um, on August twenty-third, uh, the Airport Board voted and approved the, uh, the twenty, fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget for the airport. And, uh, we actually put a, a summary of that budget in your package, and, uh, we're, we're, we're prepared to go through the summary, uh, if you wish, or answer any questions that you may have.
I went through it in detail, and I don't know if everyone else on the commission did. If they, if you need for him to do so, then we can, but I, I, I think it was very informative. So.
Motion to approve or accept?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Item number eight, consideration impossible action to approve a resolution accepting the anticipated, um, Federal Aviation Administration, FAA, grant offer number three, forty-eight, zero, one, zero, one, zero, seven, zero, twenty, twenty-two, in the estimated amount of fifteen million, seven hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. Um, Marv?
Uh, yes, Mayor, this is a, a grant for the runway extension. Uh, we've been working on this project for years now, uh, for the runway extension to support our wide-body aircraft, particularly the cargo operations at the airport, uh, working closely with the FAA. Uh, we, and, the reason it says anticipated, as the FAA is doing everything they can to meet our budget, uh, the, the project was over what we estimated, uh, with the increase in, in, uh, in costs. Uh, but at this point in time, we're, we're anticipating that grant to be in that fifteen million dollar range. And if we get approval, it's going to be one of the last grants issued by the Southwest Region. And, uh, so we need approval to sign it, uh, when we receive it, so that we can get it back and move forward.
Wonderful.
I'll make a motion to, second.
Take that money before they take a bad grant.
That's just shy sixteen million, we'll take it.
Yeah.
And thank you for all of your great work, um, at, at the airport. We're very blessed to have you. Um, so all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Pose, motion granted. Thank you. Item number nine, consideration impossible action to authorize a city manager to award task orders under RFQ twenty twenty-one fourteen, professional engineering services for the city of Harlingen American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty-one drainage improvement projects to the remaining three of the nine previously selected firms. Luis?
Good evening, Mayor Sepulveda and Commissioners. Um, this item in front of you is the three remaining, um, engineering firms from the ARPA project. Uh, last year, we had an RFQ where we selected nine firms. Um, we've, um, assigned or issued task orders for six of them already, uh, those being Cops Pendley, Ted C, Half, Consort, CSC, and Guzmán, Guzmán and Muñoz Engineering. Uh, these three remaining ones are Argutierras Engineering, Sames, uh, SAM Engineering and Serving, and SWG Engineering. Uh, what Argutierras has is Tiki and Fair Park, uh, which are systems one oh five and two twenty-four. Uh, Sames has systems two oh four and two fifty-two. And, uh, SWG has two forty-four. Um, all these systems come from the two thousand and eight, uh, drainage master plan. Of the six million from ARPA, we've recommend, and, and we've kind of thought of that if we allocate two million for just design efforts, and then four million for construction, uh, would give us a, a, a good plan to spend this six million. Um, and that would give us for about four, uh, projects from the ARPA designs, uh, so that they'd be shovel-ready. Uh, and then future agenda items, we may request more task orders from these nine firms. Uh, and, and with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
So what exactly do you want us to do?
Recommend, uh, you, I recommend, I'm asking you for, for the approval to issue task orders for the remaining three engineering firms that were selected last year from the ARPA funds, from, from the ARPA grant.
To do his job, Gabe.
So move.
Second.
I would make an amendment to that motion. I would ask that Gabe be given authorization to negotiate the construction costs, specifically the SWG one. Uh, those construction costs is at thirteen point five. Gabe, I'd like to bring that down, please.
I knew that was coming.
I, I will accept that amendment.
That's why I said to do his job.
Yeah, exactly.
We have full faith that you are going to save us some money there, uh, Gabe. So, we have a second?
Second.
Okay.
And I accepted his amendment.
Okay, wonderful. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose, uh, motion passes, thank you. Um, item number ten, consideration impossible action to authorize city manager to award a construction contract to Chlor Equipment LLC for the Los Vecinos Street Improvement Project, which was designed by staff and partially funded by the CDBG Program, Grant B nineteen twenty MC forty-eight zero five oh four, and the Harlingen Housing Authority.
Thank you, Mayor Sepulveda, Luis Vargas, uh, City Engineer. Um, I, again, asking you for your approval, uh, to, to award a contract, construction contract to Chlor Equipment LLC. Um, the CDBG Program, um, received a grant, uh, in twenty nineteen for a hundred and ninety-two thousand. During the planning phase of the project, three streets were selected for rehabilitation, and those are West Piers Avenue, Mitchell Avenue, and West Buchanan Avenue, all from the Dead End to South M Street. And, uh, during the design phase, in coordination with the Housing Authority, uh, they asked us to participate in the cost year, uh, so that they could add, uh, to the project additional parking, new sidewalks, uh, ramps, and relocation of trash containers and new lighting. And, and due to the project additions, the city, uh, reapplied and received another grant, uh, for a total of four hundred and fifty-four thousand. And, uh, since the, uh, estimated cost of the project with addition was one million, three hundred and fifty-nine thousand, uh, the Housing Authority, uh, agreed to pay for that share. And, uh, we received bids for the construction, and, uh, we are asking to approve, uh, a construction contract with Chlor Equipment for the, uh, amount of one million, five hundred and fifty-eight thousand. a construction contract with Chlor Equipment for the amount of 1,558,000. And we've thought that we can reduce traffic congestion and nuisance by doing the project in phases at one street at a time.
I love hearing the phrase, "We received a grant."
Yes, sir.
And Chlor Equipment was substantially lower right at the bid than the others that you got?
That is correct.
By like 500,000 dollars?
Easily.
Or more? I can't see.
To me, that's a little bit of a red flag when there's such a massive gap between the two. My only concern is the last time we used CBDG funds, it was, I believe, the Ninth Street project, the Ninth and the Eleventh Street project, and that was kind of a, there was a lot of issues there because of the type of strings attached to CBDG funds. And there was also another issue the time before that with CBDG funds there on Buchanan. And that was a time that, that took forever as well. I think it took double the time. They had issues with the sidewalks, all of that. And so are you comfortable, Luis, because this is going to fall on you, using this company? And do you feel confident that they'll do a good job with those restrictions?
The difference is so high that for me to justify 500,000 to the second lowest bidder is, is difficult. So I, with the difficulties that the lowest bidder may present, I, I think.
Because when they come in with the lowest bid, then we start getting change ordered, right? And they're going to start, they're going to start jacking us up in that 500,000 strings pretty quickly.
Yeah.
Have we done anything with them before?
I'm, I'm sorry?
Have we used this company before for anything? Are we familiar with them?
I, I, I haven't, but I've heard that the city has had other contracts with, with Chlor Equipment.
Successful, as far as we know.
Luis? I think we lean a little bit on Commissioner Lopez because he's got some experience or knowledge about what happened. Maybe if you can share that with Luis.
Yeah, just on, right when I became, I got appointed to the CBDG Board like about four years ago. And that's the thing, it was like our first year, we gave out money. I didn't know that with those funds, I think you have to have X amount of, like, they have to be like $15 an hour minimum. And there's other, like, strings attached to that money.
There are wage rates requirements that you have to meet. There's, repair will have to be checked. You can't be on a debarred list. So there are some restrictions into using CDBG funds. And you're right, we did have an issue with the sidewalks on Buchanan. But staff stayed on it and eventually got it, got them constructed and fixed. So we got through it. It wasn't easy, but we did, we did get it done.
And then like subsequently, two years later, we had the exact same issues on Ninth Street. And my neighborhood still talks about how long that one took, because I think it took, what, double the time just about? And there was like, TCEQ kept getting called on that company for illegal dumping. And that's my concern, is that the company we hired, I just want them to be a good company.
Did we verify?
And this was Chlor?
No, no, this was a prior company.
Okay.
With the CBDG funds.
Okay.
Such a big gap in finance.
You can, you can award subject to staff looking into whatever work they've done to see if they've had any issues. If they have, then we can come back. But I think the bids will be.
Do you want to, here's my, I want to bail you out, but I want to help out the whole situation here. Maybe we need to verify the references of Chlor Equipment, number one. Okay? And secondly, let's verify that the funds out of the CDBG are readily accessible. Otherwise, we're going to have that situation. And that's why we don't, hold on, there's one more. And the big one. Okay? This, this work is going to be done at Los Vecinos. Okay? I'm going to hit you. There is a situation, it's not a situation, there is a potential, this is where I think outside the box, way outside the box. We can have a developer look into redoing Los Vecinos, La Moyn Gardens, Bonita Park. That takes a little bit of time. Okay? Now, I don't know how fast I can move. I don't know if the commission would want me to explore that and be really open. Because about 10 years ago, at Los Vecinos, there was a sign, new, new housing coming, that was going to be available. Mr. Servantes, I don't know if he was employed with the city to where those plans are still available. Okay? So that is a big, major project, development project. Whatever we can get has to be bondable by 20 to 30 million to do these projects. So it's not something that we can just jump and do this from one minute to the next. We need to really double-check everything and make sure the numbers are there for, across the board, for the city to where we can get this done. Right? I want this. I want to, what I really would like is, is to explore that possibility. Okay? And, and look at the numbers and see if they're doable. Can we get it done? Okay? Yes, there's one out of San Antonio? Pick up the phone. I can get you one from the Dallas area. That's easy. Okay? Just make a call and get, get in touch with these developers or personally pay them a visit and then try to go. But I don't know how the commission feels. Now that we're working on our budget, and this is hopefully going to be on a back burner, the budget after October 1st, we can start thinking about what we could do. This, this project, what I am suggesting, it's going to be a process. It's not going to be done from one minute to the next. Okay? It'll take through two, three, maybe four years to really get it cranking and start building and, and having these projects up. Los Vecinos, look it up. I think that's Ms. Benavides behind you.
Yes, I'm here from the housing.
Okay. So the question now is, Los Vecinos has been up since, geez, I'm 62, 62-plus years? Okay. La Moyn Gardens, I think it was, what, WW2? How long has that been up?
We took it over in 1969.
1969. But they were there because that was part of the Harlingen Air Base?
Yes. And we've looked at the, we're going into a different area. Good evening, Commissioners and Mayor. I am Hilda Benavides. I'm the Executive Director for the Housing Authority. And yes, we have looked at development, but what it really comes down to is the developer takes a big chunk of, of the money and the property and runs it for about 15, 20 years. And we definitely don't want to do that. We want it to stay with us, the Housing Authority that gets the money and gives it back to the community. So right now, what we're looking at is getting this approved. And the thing is that we are going to put over a million dollars ourselves as a housing authority. We have the money to do that. We budget that already for Los Vecinos. So definitely, we need to get this done. I can look at other avenues. I can meet with you to start looking to see where a developer that's not going to come and take everything from us, from our community that needs it. And so definitely, that is why we haven't gone there. And our units, have you been in our units? Because we really have them in really good shape. And there is a need for that type of assistance in our communities.
I agree with you 100%. I grew up in Los Vecinos.
There you go.
From six months till I left to military.
A developer comes in and takes it from you and does not let you run it for about 15 years, and they get all the money. By the time you get it back, they're falling apart. So that's why we have stayed away from that. And we are looking at wanting to fix what we have. And it is historic. So there is money there that you could get for historic as well and, and tie into the historical buildings. So this is where we're at right now, wanting to get this approved. We partnered with the city two years ago. And we're finally here. And so definitely, you're going in an area that I'd love to go into, but right now, we want to fix what we have. And so I'm saying, we're giving a million dollars, partnering with the city with the 400 and how much?
454. No.
Okay. And so we've, the Housing Authority has a million dollars to fix up Los Vecinos with new street, everything that needs to be fixed up, sewer lines, everything. And so we are so glad that we partnered up and we want to get this done. And so definitely, I am open to talk to yourself and to other commissioners that may want to look at wanting to develop, we have other property that we could develop on too. So we are looking at those avenues. But for right now, we want to get this project going and get Los Vecinos up to par where it needs to be.
And up to par right now, all you're looking at is just street repair?
Yes.
No drainage, nothing else?
Yes, all of that's going to be done. This is part of it. It's there.
So the drainage will be taken care of?
Yes.
And so will the streets?
Yes. That's why we partnered up, because we couldn't do it ourselves without the city coming in and helping us out.
I will definitely be looking to that developer and another one to make sure that there's not a 15, oh, you said 15 years, right?
15, 20 years.
15, 20 years, that they take over and then they say, here you go.
Here you go.
It's called a tax credit program.
Something to that effect.
Under IRS laws.
There's different names to it, but it does.
It's 15 to 17-year program.
There you go. Well, that happened to us with Baxter Building, where they, you know, they're still running it, and it's been a while. So no, I, I've really looked and done my research here. And public housing is very much needed in our community. And so definitely, if you ever want to contact me so we can go to our sites and look at that, I would gladly open the door for that. I am here to serve. I am here to help our community. But definitely, this project needs to go through because we need Los Vecinos to be up to par. With the, the streets, we, parking is very difficult. And I'm more than sure you've heard complaints of people parking on M Street, parking on Fillmore, parking on the different. So definitely, it's something that we need to, we, we've come this far. We have to go through it.
I'm curious, and I agree with you 100%, like, I'm an LV. That's why I say. But where's the additional parking going to be?
It's in the, it can be on the property.
One day. Like where?
We have different areas, and actually, they're going to do inclines to where they're going to go in. Well, he has more information on.
So, so the, the parking, right now, there's roundabouts on each of the streets, right? We're converting those to parking. And then we'll have also parking on both sides. We're kind of widening the road so that we can allow more parking there.
How long is all this going to take?
I think it's about a year. It's going to take a while to get it done once we get going, right?
I don't have the exact number, but I can give you that. I'm thinking more than six months.
Yeah.
More than six months.
That's fine. I'm just, just, just curious.
So could we approve this, and then just on the condition that Daniel stated, that we make sure that Chlor Equipment meets all the requirements that, that are necessary for the funding?
We can do that. We can check into that. Their past, their references.
Is that not something that's done prior?
No, we do, normally, they list references that they want you to call. What we can do is try to find out other people that they may have worked for.
And the City of Harlingen hasn't used them before?
Mayor, I'm not sure. I have to check.
Okay. Yeah, that's a little, that is concerning. And I did see the substantial difference in sometimes, you know, I have my own business, and people that are, that have their own business, you know that sometimes quality is, is important. And so when you see that huge number, it does give me a little pause. And that's kind of why I brought that. And I'm sure that same, same thing for you. So just, we, I think what you're doing is wonderful. It's needed. I wish it could be done faster. But I'm glad that we're here at this point, and you were able to, you know, partner and, and get this done. Thank you for your hard work. And we want to make sure, but we want to make sure that we're doing it responsibly and that we're not going to have issues down the, down the road. So if, 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 if we can ensure that, I'm sure that Gabe and Luis are going to look into it for us, right? Another thing to do.
That's all right. We'll figure it out.
Whatever you need from us as the Housing Authority, we're willing, we have our own architects as well. So if there's anything that needs to be done there, we're willing to help out. Like I said, it's a partnership and we want to work together. We can't do it by ourselves.
Understood. 100%. Thank you, Ms. Benavides. Any other discussion? Do you have a motion? Or you want to condition it, or?
Oh, I make a motion to approve subject to management verifying the contractor's references. Second.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Post? Motion passes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. And thank you, Luis. Item number 11, consideration and possible action to approve the installation of speed humps along the following streets and intersections. This was put on the agenda by Commissioners Lopez and Mayor Protem Rini Pettis. And those streets are West Ballard Avenue, Lafayette, Arcadia, East Taylor Street, and South 17th Street, Sterling Avenue, West Vincent Avenue, North Shirley, South 13th Street, South 11th Street, Empress Lane to South Tam Lane, Orange Heights Drive, Finley Drive, and North B Street.
So moved.
Second.
One second. I just want to make sure that the motion that we make is very clear, if you wouldn't mind, Mike, if I were to just adjust it. I would move that we put, I'm sorry, you had something? No. I'd move that we put two speed humps, one on, or West Ballard, on West Ballard and Lafayette Avenue, two on Arcadia Drive. It's an elbow, so one on one side, one on the other. Two on East Taylor Street and South 17th Street. Again, that's a corner, so one on East Taylor, one on 17th Street. Two on Sterling Avenue, one on Vincent Avenue, one on North Shirley Street. Two on 13th Street, two on 11th Street. Empress?
I'm good.
Just one?
Yeah.
One on Empress Lane to South Tam Lane, two on Orange Heights Drive, one on Finley Drive, and then one more on North B Street.
Commissioner, I think we only have 13 speed humps in our inventory.
That's fine. If you need to, let's approve it now. And then we put 13th and 11th Street, put them on the back burner.
Okay. And I think what staff needs to do is, is look at, to see which one of these qualify for, for speed humps. And then, and then we'll take it over and install them.
Perfect. I've already been working with Craig on it.
Okay.
The process is already started.
Okay.
So, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries.
Are we going to be able to get more speed humps?
Yes, sir. But we have to wait till the next fiscal year to order some more.
Okay.
That's just next month.
So I love that we are taking care of a lot of that speeding that's, we've been hearing and these listening sessions. And so I know that Commissioner Kinsley and Morales are looking at their district and need that. So we definitely need to order some more. Item number 12, consideration and possible action to change the Harlingen City Commission regular meeting date of October 5th to another possible date.
Mayor, Members of the Commission, I think all the Commissioners are going to be at TML for the October 5th meeting. So we will need to cancel that. And we can either move it to October 12th if needed, or just cancel it outright.
And if we were to cancel it, we've really handled, will have handled most of the, the main projects that we have going on. Isn't, isn't that right? We'd be in the next fiscal, fiscal year?
We, we, I can anticipate what might come up. But I think that anything that we get, we could probably move, have the second meeting. If there's some sort of urgency, I'll just contact the Commissioners and we'll have a special meeting for anything.
So if not, we'll have meetings back to back in, in October?
You don't want to move a, have one on, let's say, September the 28th before the, before the convention? Even though it might be very, it'll be a back-to-back, if I'm mistaken.
We have another meeting, Commissioner, before the, this is for the October. So we have another meeting this month.
We're going to have a meeting on the 21st. That would just be a week after that and the 28th, which would be the, I think we really need, if we're going to have a meeting, it needs to be in, in October.
Not September.
Because I don't, I'm not sure if we're going to have anything left to consider in September, because the budget is a big issue that we're going to hopefully address on the 21st. And then it's just a week after that before the fiscal year starts. But we're going to be out that first week.
But if there's some, you know, urgent matter, we can always do a special, special meeting. But we have one more before.
Go ahead, Ms. Gabe.
I don't know what the commission.
So Gabe, what do you propose? One meeting in October?
And if we have to have a.
And if we need be, then we could have a special meeting.
Yes.
As necessary.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to that effect.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Passes. Item number 13, consideration and possible action to approve a resolution directing staff to schedule public staff to schedule public hearings and to prepare an ordinance for a proposed street name change of Hayne Drive to University Drive from Treasure Hills Boulevard to FM 509.
Mayor, City Commissioners, good evening, we have a request from the University, University of Texas River Grand Valley, to rename Hayne Drive to University Drive from Treasure Hills Boulevard to FM 509, so it's this corridor. Here's an aerial photo of the proposed street name, so there's three, three university facilities, UTRGB Clinical Education Building at the corner and then you have the Neurosciences Center and then also the UTV Early College High School, there's also some apartment complexes in the corridor, Riata Apartments and Sierra Apartments and then Treasure Hills Elementary School and then the rest is a single family homes and agricultural properties.
So, this will affect the school district, they'll have to get all new?
Yes.
All new paperhead, business cards, et cetera, et ceteras?
Yes, that, that one school will have, will have to change their address.
And have you talked with the school board about this, changing their address?
We, we was, the school district was contacted and they have, they have reported any objections.
So, the school district's okay with changing their address?
I believe so, yes.
No one's reached out to my office, Commissioner, and you sent out letters to everyone?
We sent a letter to the, to the school district, we had a public meeting, so a letter was sent to the school district and we haven't received any comments from.
You know, what happened, when the VA was coming, it was Tennessee Avenue, the VA had all their letter, had all their business cards for all their people and the kindness, the wisdom of the City Council changed it to Veterans Drive, they had to throw away thousands and thousands of dollars worth of paper, they were never consulted.
Who's the guy that named after? Anyone else? I tried to look it up and couldn't.
I know you closed, but-
It's okay, but if you wanted, sorry Javier.
Hi, good evening, my name is Juanita Springfield and I live on Hayne Drive, I live at thirty-one oh two Hayne Drive and we do have, I have with me over sixty signatures and a letter to one homeowner, which is the only homeowner that will have to change the address from the people around in Hayne, I also have about fifty-seven texts from different neighbors on Hayne that are opposed to the change of the name, I have a petition with the signatures that says, that is addressed to you, the Honorable Mayor and the members of the City Commission, we, the undersigned residents of Hayne Drive oppose the proposed resolutions to change the name of our street to University Drive from Treasure Hills Boulevard to FM 509, which is only seven tenths of a mile, then you'll have three tenths of a mile will be Hayne Drive, the other seven tenths of a mile will be University and then the other half mile is Russell, so in, in a mile and a half, you're gonna have a street with three different names, since if we change it, it will create inconvenience, monetary expense, confusion, loss of time because we have to go to DMV and all get our change address and that's eleven dollars per person, the loss of mail and it will affect our health and security and when I say our health, I personally receive all my husband's medication by mail from the VA and there are a lot of people that express that concern, that if by the time that the, the postal service and the change of the address at the VA happens, then there will be a discrepancy and once they mail the medication, you cannot get it refilled, they will give you what they call a bridge, which is enough for a few days, but if you have somebody with serious health concerns like my husband who is a stroke survivor or with heart, with heart problems or respiratory problems, they will have trouble and it will affect their health if they don't get their medication on time and our security because also, you know, there are people that, you know, that have mental problems, you know, like dementia, Alzheimer's and they can get out of their homes and we have that in our apartments and they can get out, get lost and nobody will know where the address is, so we also find this change a bit discriminatory since it only affects the two apartment buildings, even though it has a lot of people living there, they're not homeowners, we are not homeowners, we are tenants, we are working, voting and consuming residents of this city and, and we pay property tax through our rent, so we are appreciated, we are treated as property owners even though the information was only sent to the owner of the building, we were very lucky that the building where I live, they, they gave us the information, but the other apartment building, they did not and those people are very upset because there are over, there are over four hundred or five hundred residents at the other apartment building that will be affected by this change, so we hereby request immediate discontinuance, discontinuance related to this proposed change of street name by the University of Texas River Grande Valley, the City of Harlingen's leadership, the Commission and everybody involved and we respectfully will accept and will really ask you to consider not changing the name of the street because of all the problems that it will create to more than six hundred residents and not to mention the school district, respectfully, thank you very much.
Did you provide the petition to Javier?
Yeah, I'm gonna give it to him right now with the letters.
Thank you.
I have a letter from the homeowner at thirty-one oh five and these are all the texts from people that, they're not directly involved, they're the people that are on the lateral streets that are also very concerned and very upset because they feel that they should have been informed and, and I have here the petition with sixty-five signature.
Just as a, as a matter of information, we, have you had to send out letters to everybody that was gonna be impacted on Hayne Drive and we did get a letter from the owner of the apartment complex saying they had no issue with it, so we proceeded, so we, we thought that they had the pulse of the-
Just to verify, I, I asked the owners of the, the managers of both apartment complexes to notify all the tenants of the, we had a public meeting to get feedback on, on the proposal, so we did do that, so the managers notified all the tenants from, for both apartment complexes, so that's why Ms. Stingray was, was there at the meeting.
There were three people at the meeting.
But, but we did ask the managers to notify all the tenants for both apartment complexes, we did do that.
Okay.
And we're doing this at the request of the University of Texas River Grande Valley, so.
Right, and so, I did have some, I think and I, and I've, and I've reached out to, to Gabe on this and to talk about specifically the issue in regards to their address and, what, how this would inconvenience the people that were living there, how it would impact any change of, of address and what action on their part would they need to do and can you, can you speak a little bit about that because we, that was something that you looked into, is that-
Yes, Javier actually met with the postmaster here in Harlingen and they did inform staff that all they needed was a copy of the ordinance that would make the change or the resolution, but that they would use that to continue service to the residents so that it would be, it would not be impacted, there would be no delay in delivery of the mail, so we did get that from the postmaster, so we've, we felt confident that moving forward, there would be no impact except for the change of, of address that would have to happen.
So, just so that I understand, the ordinance would automatically ensure that, because that is concerning medications and, and things of that nature, there's no period of time where there will be, I, I guess I'm looking at it as whenever I move and I do a change of address and it never, it is done quickly and, you know, as a matter of fact, there is a wonderful police officer that lives in a house that I lived in ten years ago and he delivered something to my office just this week, which was very nice of him, but that happens, it, it, how is this any different?
Well, all, all we can, can go by is what the postmaster told us, that they would use whatever document that we did and change the name and use that for their records so they continue the service delivery, but whether there's gonna be some hiccups in the delivery, there, there may be, it's hard for us to say that there won't, but we did notify the post service so that they know that this may be happening.
And why did the UTRGB want this specifically, like is there any benefits, like any kind of things that they get from having the name?
Well, one of the things that happened was, the mayor and I met with Dr. Bailey, Dr. Hocker, Veronica Gonzalez and we, we talked about several issues, the growth of the University of Texas here in town and one of the things they mentioned was that in Edinburgh and was it Brownsville or McAllen?
Brownsville.
Brownsville, they have university drives that were changed for the university and so they were asking if Harlingen could do the same, so we looked at it and we looked at, first of all, residential homes that would, would be impacted and there's some on the other side of Hayne, Russell Lane's in Tamnito, so it doesn't matter to us because that's a different town, but we did look at Hayne Drive from Treasure Hills to, to 509 and right now, there aren't any homes, there's, there's going to be, there's two active subdivisions that are under construction, but nobody's living there now, so we thought if we changed the, the name now, that by the time the residents move in, it would have already been set as a university drive if the Commission agreed and we knew there were, excuse me, the two apartment complexes there, so we reached out to them and we didn't know what the impact would be, but then when the owners told us they had no issue with it, we figured, okay, so I guess it's fine and so we-
Because I like the message that it gives, like especially to the kids, I mean, all the kids that go to Treasure Hills University and every day they pass university, university, university drive, university, university and that kind of sends a message like, you know what, here in Harlingen, we want you to go to college, we want you to go to university and it's a good thing, plus I think it's a good thing in, in showing UTRGB that we're committed to them and we want to grow with them and hopefully they bring more stuff to Harlingen, so that way our kids can benefit from all the facilities that UTRGB has.
And, and another reason that we chose this particular section was because there is a school of pediatrics right there already on Hayne Street and the other streets don't really have a, a college of medicine anywhere that's facing it, so this was one, there might be another college that comes up later behind that area, we're not sure, that may be long term and so that's one of the reasons we chose that particular section.
And from our meeting, I, I know they mentioned that they wanted to have a university district like they have in, in Brownsville and they have in Edinburgh and if I remember correctly, that helps them potentially grow and be able to get more funding because it's a university district and that, and, you know, to have UTRGB continue to grow in that area and so in the future, I would really love to see an undergraduate, you know, and we talked about that, that, you know, the city, Harlingen is one of the, we're, we're a, a growing city and we have students that travel to Edinburgh and we have students that travel to Brownsville to go and take, get undergrad, we have a great medical district, but that was one of the conversations that I had with them saying, hey, why not Harlingen, let's, let's do Harlingen and apparently that was something that they had talked about years and years ago and it never, you know, it just never happened and so those are those kind of conversations in making sure that they grow and that they're able to, to, you know, request more money because it's a university district, but I, I am concerned, I, I am concerned about these, these issues as well.
If I may, the, the, the people at the other apartment building that has over four hundred apartments and they have over six or seven hundred people living there, they did not, they did not tell their tenants, yeah, and I have the texts from the tenants, you know, that I brought the copies, they did not, they just decided that they didn't have any issue, the apartment building where I live, they, they did and everybody was opposed, they had a meeting, they called for a meeting, the apartment building has a problem with changing the address too, I just could not bring the letter because that corporation has several owners and they needed to get all together in a board meeting so they can give, send you the letter that they are opposing, the other property, which is a single house at the end of the street, is thirty-one oh five Hayne Drive, or no, thirty-five oh one Hayne Drive, that lady is opposed and I have the lady, the letter, the lady and her husband, so out of four properties that you have there, fifty percent of them don't want it and we are not opposed to having a university district as long as they keep Hayne Drive, nobody's opposing the university, nobody's opposing anything else, now also, the appraisal district is having a really hard time knowing that they're gonna have to rechart everything, it's gonna be a lot of cost to the county, it's gonna be a lot of cost to the city because they have to send street names and everything, this, this, the school district needs to change all the paperwork.
Brenda?
Just got her checks, so now she's gonna have to go and pay again because the bank's not gonna give her free checks, we have, before we make any changes, we have to change our driver's license, that is time consuming and it costs money also and before we, because we cannot change anything else and furthermore, the post office will tell us that they have no problem, for one year, they can forward your, your mail and you just said that some things you did not get, there are a lot of things that are not forwarded, federal paperwork, your W twos, your credit cards, your debit card from your checking account in the bank, your voter registration, those things are not forwarded, so the, the post office can say that they can try and they say that they don't have any problem, of course they don't, but it is a lot of hassle for more than six hundred residents in this, in this city.
Gigi, would you guys be opposed, would you all be opposed to changing Treasure Hills Boulevard from Hayne Drive, South 277? That one, right in front of Golden Palms?
That's not our portion, it's from Treasure Hills to 509.
No, no, I'm fine with that, I'm fine, I'm just saying, would you all oppose if, instead of doing it on Hayne Drive, instead of the name on the university, from Hayne Drive to university, would you all be cool with, excuse my personal language, would you all be cool with us doing Treasure Hills from 77 to Hayne Drive, so it's kind of near you, it's, it would intersect Hayne Drive and 77, or Hayne Drive and university?
Can I interject and I do appreciate the willingness to explore other options and the efforts that you all have endeavored to make this happen, I don't feel comfortable in speaking for the people who are in that address, I, I, I think one of my concerns as is for you, Madam Mayor, is the procedural aspect of this in terms of the residents being notified, which I, I question because I do have people who live in the, in Sierra Apartments and they told me by a text that they weren't notified, so to your question, my answer would be out of respect to those individuals, I would, you know, ask them and I do wanna challenge the Commission respectfully to kind of like for us to adapt the mindset of what a property owner is and what a renter is, I know there are proper definitions for those, but I've been at Riata Apartments for six years, Ms. Springfield has been for four, there are people there who have lived there for ten years plus and our apartment complex gets a lot of traction in tenants that end up working at Valley Baptist, who serve as doctors and, and professionals in the medical field, so, you know, the fact that we are renters does not mean that we are itinerantes, right, it doesn't mean that we just come and go, we really live there, it's just that for one reason or another, we haven't been able to buy property, so I, I fully and respectfully reject the interest in changing and I second what Ms. Springfield said, I, I do echo and would like to see a university district and I do see that as possible to do that while still keeping Hayne Drive as our name, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you and, and just, I just want you to know that we fully support and believe that you have every right as a resident of- as a resident of Harlingen, whether you're a renter or you own property or, you know, you are a citizen of Harlingen. So we do respect your opinions and your views. I lived in lots of apartments and actually, my sister-in-law lived in those apartments for a long time. And I know that there is a lot of medical professionals that live there. So definitely want to let you know that that wasn't part of the consideration. It was more UTRGV wanting something near the new podiatry school to claim as a university district. So it was by no means, you know, these are, looking at it now, I'm, and internalizing what you're saying and the both of you, it seems that maybe we thought, oh, these are apartment complexes, so it doesn't matter. That was not the thought process, just so that you know. It was UTRGV making this request and, you know, we all know that they've done so much in this community and we wanted to try to provide something to, you know, give back to them in addition, so.
One of the things, Mayor, is also when you look up the ownership under the appraisal district records, only the owner pops up. And it gives you their address to contact them unless we go in and manually check each apartment building. There's no way to. But Javier, do you want to talk about what McAllen did as far as?
Yes, for Second Street and 17th Street. So in McAllen, they ran into this situation. So what they do is they add, so in this case, it will be Hayne Drive and then in parentheses, University Drive. So that's what they did over there in a couple of situations where they wanted to add an extra name. So they still get the recognition, the family gets the recognition, but the people that live there do not have to change their address. So that's a possibility to just add.
Which family? You see the family gets the recognition?
Yes, like for example.
Like the household?
Like for example, 17th Street downtown in McAllen. The Guerra family was kind of like the founders of that part of the city. So they asked for that recognition. So, but to not ask the residents that live there to change their address, what they did is they changed the street name to 17th Street in parentheses, Guerra Street. So by doing that, the family got the recognition that they wanted, but the residents in the area did not have to change their address.
It's not, and I don't know if mail would get delivered to University Drive, for instance, if the, if the, if the school of podiatry changed their address to whatever number it is, University Drive. I don't know if that would actually get delivered there or not.
So.
But we could check.
This is just, you know, I'm looking at the, it's almost 10 o'clock. What if, and I mean, the commission can do what it chooses, but maybe tabling this item, talking to UTRGV? Because the whole point is to, they need, they need to have a university district and I want them to grow and we want to be able to work with them and provide this. And maybe this isn't the right spot for it. Maybe there's other things that we can look at. But I think that's a wonderful idea, but I think that takes away from the purpose of doing this. This isn't a family that says, you know, oh, I want this to be the Sepulveda Lane. This is more of, you know, UTRGV needing it so that way they can grow in Harlingen. And we, maybe we can find some, some way to appease the residents on UTRGV and maybe we just can't get to that right now unless you all are making a decision on.
The history record also somewhere who Hayne Drive is named after. And I think it's worth doing that research.
We can try to find out. We can do that.
Somebody may all of a sudden jump here one day and say, damn, you took my street down. I'll give you $5 million.
That's, right.
We can, we can table this, Mayor, and then staff do more work to try to get something.
I'll just straight up move to deny, deny completely at this point for Hayne Drive. If they want to look at another street, then we can look at another street. But I think Hayne Drive has pretty much made their, their thoughts.
I'll second you.
What's up?
Second.
Oh, thank you. I'll be quiet.
There was just suggestions because it's approaching 10:00 PM. But, okay, so we got a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Excuse me, I just want to make sure we're sticking with Hayne Drive, right?
We're leaving it as Hayne Drive alone.
They're rejecting it and I would encourage still to, you know, still have those conversations with UTRGV and see what we can, what we can do. Let's, let's, let's make it happen for them and let's ensure that if there's apartment complexes or whatever, that everybody is notified and we have a public hearing and more people are able to, to speak. Because that's, we would have liked to have seen the 65-plus people had that opportunity. But obviously, they made the, they've stayed here all this time to be able to present that. So I think, you know, I want to respect that. So any?
I am a little bit confused, Madam Mayor, because I think there's a motion that was presented to reject it, but I am also hearing work with the university and then if the name needs to be changed. So if the motion is to reject, why do we have to entertain the possibility of changing the name?
No, we're not.
That's not what we're doing.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, no, it's, that, I probably just got ahead of myself. Yes. So the motion that we have is to reject. And we got a second by Mesmer. And so all those in favor of rejecting item number?
13.
13. Say aye.
Aye.
Post? Okay, so item 13 has been rejected. Now, I encourage that we still continue to work with UTRGV to give them that university district at a different location. Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Item number 14, consideration and possible action to approve the early payoff of a note payable in the amount of $347,630 bearing a legal description of north 3.955 acres out of 7.91 acres of Block 179 out of San Benito Land and Water Company subdivision, property ID 416444 located on the north side of Tennessee Street between the VA Healthcare Center and South Texas Emergency Care Foundation.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner. Sorry, that was a mouthful, but just to be brief there, in 2019, we purchased two parcels of property on Tennessee Street between the VA and South Texas Emergency Care Foundation. And so one of the owners passed away and they're, they're trying to settle their estate. So the executor of that estate contacted us and wanted to give us the opportunity to pay off the note before they sold it off as they sell the estate. So we just, I just wanted to bring that to the city commission to see if those were your wishes. And there are two parcels of property. One of them belongs to Richard Garcia, the other one belongs to Francisco Gonzalez.
No, they belong to us.
Well, they belong to us, but the notes, the notes payable belong to those, to those individuals. So the one that is asking to be paid off is the Richard Garcia.
And it was financed at 5%.
At 5%. So both of the two notes are at 5%.
I'm recommending that. For the one property that they're asking us to pay it off early, I would recommend approval.
And that'll save us a couple bucks in interest for your interest payment.
Yes.
Right.
Okay, so do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion carries. Item 15, consideration and possible action to approve a resolution amending the Harlingen Downtown Improvement District Budget for fiscal year 2021, 2022.
This is the budget amendment for the downtown district budget amendment number two. So they are amending their revenues to 327,763 and their expenditures to 334,729.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion carries. Item number 16, consideration and possible action to approve a resolution adopting the Harlingen Downtown Improvement District Budget for fiscal year 2023.
Exhibit A is the fiscal year 2023 Harlingen Downtown Improvement District Budget. They have budgeted revenues of $371,000 and expenditures of $338,477. Exhibit A details each category line.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion carries. I'm going to skip on over to 19, presentation of the City of Harlingen Investment Report for the quarter ending June 30, 2022.
So our quarterly report for, for the period ending June 30, 2022 indicates that we have $77,863,920 in cash and investments. We've earned $100,253,000 in interest revenues with an weighted average of interest of 0.89%. And all of our cash and investments are due within 100, within three months. If you turn to page five, that's a breakdown of our investments. So we have approximately 5.59 in bank deposits, 6.46 in the CD and 87.95 in, in the local government investment pool. That just summarizes our investment.
And you recognize on the third Wednesday of this month, 1:02 in the afternoon, the Federal Reserve will raise interest rates again probably by 75 basis points.
Yes, sir, so we're.
So when this money rolls, we could get significantly higher rates.
That is correct.
Do we have any questions? Discussion? Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you so much. Item 20, public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading for an SUP for an outdoor event center in a general retail district located along the north side of New Hampshire Street, approximately 1,900 feet north of Hale Avenue and approximately 2,400 feet south of Business 77 Sunshine Strip, bearing a legal description of Block 3, Lot 9 and 10, New Hampshire Commercial Subdivision.
Yes, we have a proposed outdoor event center, new construction. It's kind of halfway between Business 77 and Hale Street in these two lots right here. They're zoning this general retail district. They need a special use permit for the, to be able to do this project. These are the two lots that the project is proposed on. The owner also owns this property and this property as well for future expansions. So it's all vacant land all around, so it's conducive to the project. It's a photo from New Hampshire. And that's the floor plan, well, the site plan for the project. So it's two separate events, event center, outdoor event centers with swimming pools and sitting areas. And then they're going to share a parking, parking lot. Staff recommends approval subject to the following conditions. Maximum occupancy will be limited to 3.5 persons for parking space, a total of 151 people for both event centers. Must have a licensed security guard if there's going to be alcoholic beverages consumed during events, complying with the requirements from planning, building inspections, fire prevention and health. Must comply with the noise ordinance and the hours of operation are Monday to Thursday, 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM, and Fridays to Sundays, 10:00 AM to 12:00 AM. Planning and zoning commission held a public hearing on August 24 and no one spoke in opposition and they recommended approval unanimously.
Javier, the only thing I noticed in this one was that there was no lifeguards. And then I think there was a question about that and a, and the applicant said, if when they rent the venue, then they decide, is, is?
Yes.
Does the city have any kind of liability when it comes to?
Well, no, no, but conditions can be added. So if you, if you want to add an additional condition that they have to have a lifeguard during any events, that's an additional condition that can be added to the ordinance if desired.
Mark, is that something that you would recommend that we do or?
That would be acceptable. That'd be an acceptable way to see.
I think it seems like a nice option to have. I mean, it sounds, it sounds nice.
But if one requires them to have a lifeguard, how will we police that?
I'm not sure, but I'm just thinking that if you have an event center and they have kids, I'm a mom and if my son is going to go to a party and they're, and it's up to the person that's renting, I don't know, I just, I'm not sure. That's why I'm saying, I don't know if that's something that Mark thinks that we should probably condition it upon, upon that. I don't know how it works if there's other event centers, because this is kind of unique. I've never heard of an event center with a swimming pool.
The Elks Club does have a swimming pool.
But they have lifeguards.
I have no clue.
I know because my cousin is, or my little cousin was, you know, Colby, right? I think, I don't know. So, so what I'm saying is in most places, I feel comfortable, like, yes, you can go because of that. So did you look into that, if there was any? I've never seen any other event center that's of swimming pools. I think it's an awesome idea. That's just my own.
I've seen some in Hidalgo County and they're very popular. So I will expect this facility to be rented year round.
But do they have lifeguards is my question.
I don't know. I can look into that.
It's just, I mean, I don't know what the, what the commission thinks.
You might hear the online correct?
Wonderful. Come, come tell us.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen. I want to thank you for the opportunity to be here today. My name is Doreen Icabo. I'm going to be reading because I'm a little nervous. My name is Doreen Icabo and I'm the owner of Fun and Fabulous Party Place in Brownsville. I have been in the hospitality business for a little over five years, helping families create beautiful memories. I actually got inspired to open a place in Harlingen due to the fact that I've been blessed with wonderful customers having to travel all the way to Brownsville to have their events with me. Sorry, excuse me. Okay, it will be a great honor and privilege to bring that also to Harlingen. And regarding the, the lifeguard, I have, I follow a lot of them on Facebook. You are responsible for your guests. Even in my other venue, I have insurance and everything, but supervision without supervising the guests, just like if you go to any other places, you have to bring your own. If you feel the need that you have to provide a lifeguard, you'll be the one responsible to provide your own lifeguard. And regarding the alcohol, of course, I'm going to mandate that you have to provide the security. That's non-negotiable. What else? It's going to be a pool place, of course. And so my right, the lot nine is also going to be an ice cream store. So it's going to be an ice cream, balloon store, a lot of other stuff that I'm going to be, you know, bringing to this beautiful city. Yes, the lot to the left, to the right, actually, is going to be an ice cream store, which will commence probably towards the end of next year. It will be an ice cream store, a balloon store where people can buy bouquets and all the good stuff. What else? And of course, it's located by Arroyo Park. I'm not from, I'm not from here, though. I'm from Brownsville, so I don't really know so much about the place. But I do beautiful work, beautiful decorations and everything. You can check out my, my Facebook page. I asked that, you know, check out my Facebook page, Fun and Fabulous and Fabulous Tippy. And what else? That's about it. It's really going to be pretty with the slides, like the ones they have in Burger King. The playground, I'm going to have the playground. So it's going to be fun, fun, fun for parents and, you know, for the most part, it's not going to have like a very, very deep pool area. It's going to be more like a shallow, about 3.5 to maximum five feet. That's for the, the A. Because it's going to be two pools. And then the other pool, which will commence sometime next year as well, will be for like adult parties, will have like a bar, a bar inside the pool. So just thinking out of the box and doing something really, really pretty for this awesome city. And it will be nice and a big privilege if I'm considered and, you know, allowed to proceed with approval for construction.
Sounds fabulous.
Thank you. Actually, that's the name, Mayor. It's going to be the fabulous pool events. But my businesses in Brownsville, one is Fun and Fabulous Party Place and then the other one is Fabulous Tippy. other one is Fabulous Tippy. I provide slumber parties for kids, for grown-ups and everything. So I do just make people happy generally.
Any questions? Do you have a motion?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve with the staff recommendations.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion carries. Good luck to you, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. We needed to have a public hearing. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak for or against?
Fabulous Pool?
Fabulous Pools, that doesn't want fabulous entertainment for the City of Harlingen. Just putting that out there. Okay. So do we have to re, redo this since I? I do? Okay. All right. So I think that you have to, Saucy, you have to read the caption.
Yeah, it was omitted from my.
Sorry. Twenty. I got so excited with all the fabulous stuff that you said that I just, yes, I just wanted to push it on everyone.
An ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the City of Harlingen to issue a special use permit to, to Doreen Ekaboe to allow an outdoor event center in a general retail GR district located along the north side of New Hampshire Street, approximately one-thousand-nine-hundred feet north of Hale Avenue, and approximately two-thousand-four-hundred feet south of Business Seventy-Seven Sunshine Strip, bearing a legal description of Block Three, Lots Nine, and Lots Ten of the New Hampshire Commercial Subdivision, subject to the conditions outlined in the body of the ordinance.
Now, do we have a?
I have, I just now.
Motion.
With, uh, did you want to save the same, same motion here? Okay.
With the staff recommendations?
Yes.
Okay. And do we have a?
I'll second that motion.
Wonderful. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries. Now you may go. Thank you. Twenty-one, public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading for an SUP for a bed and breakfast in a single-family residential district located at eleven-eighteen Riojondo Road, bearing a legal description of Block Eighty-Six, Harlingen Land and Water Company Subdivision.
Yes, we have a proposed bed and breakfast, which is kind of like a mini hotel in, in a residential area. This is on the south side of Riojondo, halfway between Tenth and Thirteenth Street. It's an existing home. The Davis are planning to continue to live in the house and renting some of the rooms for guests. Just owning a single-family residential. They are proposing a new construction. If, if the SUP is approved, they are proposing additional construction to provide more rooms for the guests. That's the site plan for the, with the parking lot and the existing, the existing house. And these are the photos of the house. Staff recommends approval, subject to the following. Provide and maintain the required parking and comply with all the requirements from the different departments. Planning and zoning commission held a public hearing on August twenty-fourth, and, and no one spoke in opposition to the proposed SUP, and, and they recommended approval unanimously.
Wonderful.
Question.
We do, okay.
It does say there was a phone call, somebody that was concerned his parents' property taxes would go up?
Yeah, they had, they had that concern, but they did not show up to the public hearing with the planning and zoning commission.
When this, these rooms are running out, is that like a hotel tax?
No.
No, not, not yet.
Not yet.
We, we're working on adopting an ordinance that would require all B and B to actually pay a hot, a tax.
That's a, there's a bunch, actually. Okay. If there's another discussion, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing for this. Is there anyone that wishes to speak for or against the adoption of this ordinance?
Evening, ladies and gentlemen, Madam Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Patrick Davis. My wife and I have been operating, uh, listing with Airbnb for about seven years now. We've, uh, we, we are looking to add one more unit, basically bringing our house back up to the four, four bedrooms that it originally had. We took one out to open plan our dining room. But we have, for the last seven years, provided lodging for people coming to and through Harlingen from all over the world, all over the country, Mexico, Canada. We've had, we've had guests from Japan, Pakistan. We've had everyone from musicians to medical personnel, travel nurses, contract nurses, medical residents, interns, doctors, both practicing and, and in medical school. We, uh, we do our best to provide a home-like atmosphere to all of our guests. We, uh, we, everyone welcome home, and we have welcomed several residents, new residents to Harlingen in, in our time. We've, uh, we've been able to encourage several, several new families to move to Harlingen instead of other parts of the valley. We, uh, we do our best to be ambassadors for Harlingen and, and try to encourage, uh, encourage everyone to explore the businesses, restaurants, and, uh, and, and all the tourism attractions available in, in Harlingen and the rest of the valley. Now, we, uh, we have, oh, almost twelve-hundred five-star reviews from, uh, from our, from our guests. We've, um, we have been, uh, been asked to, uh, by Airbnb themselves to, to provide PR for them. We have three of the top five listings in the Harlingen area. As far as the taxes go, the, the governor approved a couple of years ago for municipalities to start collecting taxes from, uh, from home-sharing services such as ourselves. And, uh, and I would encourage the city to take advantage of that. Our guests are more than willing to, uh, to pay for our services. We have, uh, we have complied with everything that, that we've been asked to and, and plan to continue to do so, and, and I am willing to answer any questions that you have.
First off, Gabe, we need to get him a job, an ambassador for Harlingen, get him a sash or something.
We're going to have fillings for.
Maybe a sash, maybe like a little crown. With twelve-hundred, uh, five-star reviews, man, that's phenomenal.
That was what I, when I was reading through this, that really is what, what sold me, and I thought, God, you must be doing, providing a wonderful service. What is the length of stay, typical length of stay at your, at your place?
We have people staying anywhere from one night to, um, we've had people stay as long as three, three and a half months. People here for doing residencies, internships, people here for, for medical school. We just recently welcomed a young lady from Pakistan who's, uh, who's about to graduate from, uh, from her university in Pakistan, is a neurologist. She wants to come back to the United States and would love to come back to Harlingen.
Wonderful.
Because she enjoyed her time, enjoyed her time here with us. We, um, we specialize in making people feel at home, and, and Harlingen is one of the best places that I could think of for something like that because it is the perfect-sized city. It's big enough to provide lots of different attractions and services, but small enough to still have this hometown, kind of this small-town kind of feel that we all enjoy.
Thank you so much. Do you have any questions? Okay. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak for or against? We'll close the public hearing then. Thank you, sir. Uh, Mark, please?
An ordinance amending the zoning ordinance, ordinance number zero-seven-twenty-seven of the City of Harlingen to issue a special use permit to allow a bed and breakfast in a single-family residential district located at one-one-one-eight Riojondo Road, bearing a legal description of Block Eighty-Six, Harlingen Land and Water Company Subdivision, subject to the conditions outlined in the body of the ordinance.
Sub moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Item twenty-two, consideration and possible action to create a mayor's legislative subcommittee.
Mayor, members of the commission, this legislative, I'm sorry, legislative subcommittee would be an ad hoc committee created by the mayor. It would allow for the mayor to appoint up to two commissioners and would include the city manager, the Harlingen Economic Development Corporation CEO, and the airport director on the subcommittee. Staff recommends approval of the subcommittee. Happy to answer any questions, too, ma'am.
Any, any questions? Okay. So do we have a motion?
I, I do have a question. So how many people are going to be in this committee? Just you, Raudel, and the mayor, two, two commissioners?
Up to two commissioners.
Up to two commissioners?
Yes, sir.
Anybody on the outside?
No. No, just, this would be mostly to consider issues impacting the city, and so it makes it more manageable. As a matter of fact, this aft, this afternoon, the mayor, Raudel, Marv, myself, met with Congressman Vicente Gonzalez, who happened to be in town, and we met with him at the airport and talked about some of the issues impacting the airport that are substantial. And so we met with him for about an hour and a half there, so.
And we do have a legislative committee that meets with the chamber, and they have, we have stakeholders from all over the city. So this is something smaller. We do have, we, we met, was it last week? I can't even remember. I think last week. And we're going to meet again, and this is, you know, representatives from TSDC, UTRGV, Valley Baptist, and so we do have other represent, representatives in that committee, but this is just more just for, for the city.
Yeah, because I'm looking at Mr. Tim over there, and I was wondering if he's going to be included.
We can. There's lots of issues that impact the airport, the city, and most of the funding for water work comes from the Water Development Board. They very seldom get outside, but we can include him if.
Again, and this is just in a committee that I am creating so that way we have the opportunity to meet and, and we are being proactive as the session gets closer, that we are asking for what it is that we need as a city and that we can count on one another to be able to, to mobilize if we need to and, and to go to Austin should that be necessary, and we have a committed group of people within the city. But I'm open to adding additional people to, to the committee if, if, if that seems, you know, to be, to be helpful, but that's something I, I think I need to think about.
Let me let, make you aware of a couple of things. And I'll give you his name, Rolando Vella, started off with a Quad City meeting that we had in Primera, okay? He's also been in contact with the Chamber of Commerce, and he's already made overtures to having number of people from the, the area, Harlingen in particular, to be up in Austin to lobby for Harlingen. So I don't know if we're going to be duplicating ourselves here, but.
That's why we're keeping it small, Commissioner. It is, I am concerned about being duplicative, and that's the whole point. This is just a small committee within the people that we, as a matter of fact, we did today, just like Gabe said, that we are already ma, we are already doing these things. This is just kind of giving it a name and, and focused, and this is an ad hoc committee because it's a needed right now, but those, those suggestions about having to have a presence in, in Austin, that's a, that's a bigger conversation that we are having, and we, we already have our day planned. I mean, that, those, those things are moving forward. And with other, like I mentioned, you know, UTRGV, Valley Baptist, and everyone that is impacted by the City of Harlingen.
And prior to COVID, Harlingen Sampañito Day, along with the chamber and officials from both cities, go up, spend the evening, and then lobby all day.
We're actually planning for that through the chamber.
Yes.
And they've got, they're going to have a large contingent of people.
That's usually like in late January, February, more or less?
February.
Yeah, yeah. So we already do this.
Right, and I think I'd like to include Rolando Vella in that, in that committee with the chamber, to have him represent, uh, lead-in number five. And so I think that would be good. I don't think he's been attending any of the meetings, but I'll ask that I can invite him to attend.
Right, and I did speak with him about, and it, it was like the night before, I think, the meeting, and I think that that's something, that, 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 that committee has more than just the City of Harlingen, you know, or the municipal government representation it has from everyone, and that would be a perfect place for him to be, to, to, to contribute to that conversation. He does have a lot of experience when it comes to legislative issues. So do you have any other questions? Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries. Item number twenty-three, consideration and possible action to renew the ETNA dental insurance, the MetLife, formerly Davis Vision Insurance, and the UNUM Live, Live and AD&amp;D insurance plans for the City of Harlingen fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-three, with no increase in premiums, and to authorize the city manager to sign the contracts.
Mayor, members of the commission, as, as stated in the, in the caption, there were no increases in the premiums for these policies. The city does not provide any funding for these at all. These are all paid for by the employees, so staff is recommending approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries. Item twenty-four, consideration and possible action to approve a resolution adopting the Harlingen Waterworks System budget for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-three. Thank you so much, Tim, for being so patient with us.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Tim Skogland. I'm the general manager for Harlingen Waterworks System. We do have a budget that is in your packet. I have a presentation that only goes about forty-five minutes. Or I can answer questions, or we can actually go through.
That's why he's not on the ad committee.
And we have all done our homework and have read our very, very lengthy packets. I, I don't have any questions. I don't know what the rest of the commission does.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries. Thank you. So next we have board appointments. Does anyone have any board appointments?
Yes, ma'am. Reappoint Ricky Leal to the Airport Board. Appoint Fidelina Guillen to the Downtown Improvement District Board. Appoint Julio Guerra to the Senior Citizens Advisory Board. And for the Community Development Advisory Board, Daniel Araza and Lorraine Galarza.
For the Construction Board of Adjustments and Appeals, reappoint William Bud O'Rear for the Conventions and Visitors Bureau. Reappoint Roberto Aguilar for the Parks Advisory Board. Reappoint Nora Garcia, and then appoint Jerry Rounds to that board as well. And then reappoint Tedesita Garcia for the Veterans Advisory Board. And then for the Small Business Committee, Roberto Lopez.
For Healthy Harlingen Advisory Board, Alex Embreeze.
Reappoint Mrs. Davis to the EDCV Board.
I have no appointments, but I urge each and every single one of you, because I know I have students that are asking me. A couple of months ago, we created the Harlingen Teen and Young Adult Advisory Board, and so far they've only had one appointment, which is what I made. So I urge you guys to appoint someone soon so that way.
Is there any, I, I've been asked about that, is there any word that describes what they do, when they're going to, I mean, all I can tell them is, well, I know the name.
Yeah, they're going to be under, what was it, the, the C, the CBB? No, no, Parks, right?
No, they're, I was going to serve as a liaison.
Okay.
And then what we're going to do is, as part of the committee, allow them to shadow one of the departments either at the city, the airport, or Water Works. And then we were also going to allow them to, uh, tour the city, any department they wanted to, and I think MMA is one of the schools that you could appoint.
MMA is one of the schools that you could appoint from.
Can we put out a little thumbnail scenario you just described that I could show the people?
What I'll do is, I'll get you a copy of the resolution that created the committee. And it's all self-descriptive and.
Perfect.
So, whenever you guys get a chance, if you can, just appoint, because I know some of my students are, well, they're like, is everybody starting, sir? Is everybody, so let me get started.
All right. I have one appointment. It's BT Vaticas to the audit board, audit committee. Anybody else? No? Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Wonderful. Okay, so, the time is 10:30. We, at this point, want to move to executive session for consultation with the city attorney pursuant to the Texas Government Code, Section 551.01712, to receive attorney-client consultation regarding the following items. A, the School Resource Officer Program Interlocal Agreement between the City of Harlingen and the Harlingen Consolidated Independent School District. B, the Fire Facility Agreement between the City of Harlingen and the Harlingen Consolidated Independent School District. And C, the MOU between the City of Harlingen and the South Texas Emergency Foundation. Do we have a motion to go into executive session? Thank you. Second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are going into executive session. It is 10:30, and I sure do hope we will be out soon. Good morning, everyone. So, the time is 12:05, and we are now back from executive session. Thank you so much for your patience. And, let's see. Now, moving on to item number 27, discussion and action to approve item 26A as discussed in executive session. Do we have a motion?
Motion. Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Abstain.
Opposed? Okay.
Abstain.
Yes, and, and Commissioner Betis has abstained from that vote. And item 28, discussion and action to approve item 26B as discussed in executive session. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
Motion passes. Item 29, discussion and action to approve item 26C as discussed in executive session. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve, as we discussed with the one-year contract.
Do you have a second? That motion dies. Do we have another motion?
You want to make it, or, you want to make it, or I make it? Okay. I mean, do you guys want to stay here longer, or do you want to keep going? I make a motion to discuss, or to, how do I phrase this? I make a motion to approve what we discussed, and to give Gabe and the mayor the timeframe, negotiate that, that we discussed during executive session.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Same.
And for the record, Commissioner Kinsley opposed. So, motion carries.
Abstained.
I mean, abstain. It's early. It's late. Yes. Okay, wonderful. So, now, that concludes our, our meeting. Thank you so much. Have a wonderful evening.